Welcome to the special and regular meeting of the
Recording in progress.
City Council of the City of Pacifica. It is October 27th, 2025, and we are beginning our meeting at 6:14 PM. I'd like to make a note that our police chief, Chief Maria Sarasua, will be acting tonight as our acting city manager. And with us tonight for assistance city is Assistant City Attorney Denise Bizano. And Sarah, did you want to do? Roll call.
The roll call, starting with Councilmember Wright.
President.
Councilmember Espinoza. Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bowles.
Here.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Present. And I will read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rama'tush' Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rama'tush' Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Rama'tush' Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rama'tush' Aloni peoples. And I'm inviting Councilmember Wright to lead us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, the council met in closed session to discuss real property negotiation. There's no reportable action.
Thank you. We do have a special proclamation for Arbor Day. And I see some Arbor Day people in the audience. Many, all of us are Arbor Day people in the audience, I'm sure. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation and then my, see Gail, I don't know who all wants to come up. Okay. Oh, Scott. Scott and Gail. Proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition and observation of Arbor Day. Whereas, in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed at various times of the year throughout the nation and the world, and dedicated to the planting of trees in our community in order to support our environment and bolster our quality of life. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and create jobs. And whereas, trees and their surrounding soil can sequester carbon for thousands of years, thus helping to mitigate the effects of climate change and contributing to the City of Pacifica's Climate Action and Resilience Plan. And whereas, trees can increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas by increasing retail spending, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper products and wood for homes and businesses. Wherever they are planted, they are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, the City of Pacifica takes pride in being environmentally sustainable in numerous practices and processes, and in encouraging residents to do the same. Now therefore, I, Sue Beckmeyer, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim the first Saturday in November as Arbor Day in the City of Pacifica, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Done this 27th day of October, 2025. Hello.
Hello.
Mr. Leslie.
Scott Leslie, Director of Park Beach and Recreation. Good evening, Council. The Arbor Day event is happening this Saturday at 10:00 AM at Fairmont West Field. This is the seventh annual event of such. For many years, I've visited Fairmont West Park. Let's say again, it's Fairmont West Park. And had a chance to take a look at the field and the beautiful surroundings. If you look at the field and the area, there's this nice hill that goes up with plenty of mature trees that offer shade and windbreak, but there isn't any on the actual field area. So, as part of this year's event, they'll be planting 20 new trees. These trees will be more along the line on the side of the park near the street, much closer to where families, soccer players, and preschools spend their time, which is good. This will create additional shade, comfort, and it will also enhance the overall beauty of the field and play space. The trees represent more than just new landscaping. They bring real community benefits, including much-needed windbreak for the field, additional shade for players, families and children, and it will add an aesthetic boost to the entire park. So, in a little bit here, we're going to have Gail come up and tell you a little bit how to sign up. But there are a few trees that are left over that we want to make sure that we have all the trees planted. And if there are community members that would like to take part in the event, there's still a few spaces that are available. Also, as part of this event, I want to take a moment to thank the Public Works team that work very hard and are dedicated not only to this event, but all year round, to take care of our parks, our beaches, and our trees. And that this event, events like this truly showcase the great work they do every day to maintain and to improve our parks. So, I was hoping that I could get Gail Benton Shoemaker to come up and talk a little bit about Tree City Pacifica and have a few words about this wonderful annual celebration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. So, my name is Gail Benton Shoemaker, and I'm speaking as a member of Tree City Pacifica. Joining me are members Marge Davis and Jeff Moroso. We are very grateful to City Council for this Arbor Day proclamation, beautiful proclamation, and for their continued support of our urban forest. We are also extremely grateful to Public Works and to PBR Arbor Day would not happen without them. Pacifica has been a Tree City USA for seven years. Every Tree City USA celebrates Arbor Day. And as Scott mentioned, this year Arbor Day will be this Saturday at Fairmont Park, which is on Palmetto Avenue. The celebration begins at 10:00. The mayor will make comments and announce the winners of the tree art contest. These are students in Pacifica. The art contest will be at Sanchez Art Center this weekend and the following weekend. The winners.
Yes.
After the speakers, there will be a tree planting demonstration, and then volunteers will plant 20 trees. If anyone would like to plant a tree, please email treecitypacifica@gmail.com so you can receive instructions and be assigned a tree to plant. We really need this information ahead of time. Trees help fight climate change, provide habitat for wildlife, and beautify our city. The trees planted on Arbor Day will help Pacifica move closer to the 25% canopy goal in the Climate Action Plan. Join us for Arbor Day this Saturday and help us celebrate trees and our growing urban forest. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the proclamation. We can take a photo? Did anyone want to make a comment at all? I'm sure the council does.
Yeah.
If you don't mind. Let's do that. Mary.
My gosh, I'm so thankful for Tree City Pacifica. For starters, Arbor Day is wonderful. So, thank you Park Beach and Rec, Public Works. But really, thank you Tree City Pacifica, not only for bringing all this to our community, but for teaching me personally the importance of a tree canopy. So, and all the other things. But thank you so much.
Great.
I want to thank you as well. I certainly didn't move here to look at parking lots and skyscrapers. I moved here because of what you can see when you look out your window. And I feel very fortunate to have that privilege, being a former urban dweller. It's just so much more relaxing to live here. And in large part, that's thanks to you and what you're doing. I did start writing down your email address, and I just wasn't able to get the whole thing down. If you could repeat that for me one more time, I would appreciate it.
Sure. To volunteer, email treecitypacifica, all lowercase, at gmail.com.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm very excited that you guys are going to be at the Fairmont West. So, I'm happy. And my question is, are those trees going to have irrigation, or do we have to adopt them?
That's a good question. Thank you.
These will be park trees. They're on city lots, right next to the soccer field. So, these will be city trees.
Irrigation.
Oh, they have irrigation system. Yes, yes. There's already existing irrigation system.
Awesome.
Vice Mayor Bowles.
Thank you all so much for being here and for all your work to bring more trees and CO2 reductions to our city. I love that this is such a great partnership every year between, you know, different city staffs, between Tree City Pacifica, between our schools. You know, it's such a joy to see the kids bring their artwork and so excited and actually to actually be able to help plant a tree. And then be able to go back to this park and say, I helped plant that tree. Right? You're giving our youth hope and a sense that they can do something about these big problems of climate change. So, thank you all so much.
I want to thank Tree City Pacifica because of your forward-thinking leadership and bringing this to our city. I drive around in the county, everywhere in the state, and see the signs. And there are many cities in our county that have been Tree City, you know, San Bruno, Tree City, South San Francisco for years and decades. And we're still a little nascent in the beginning of our process, but it's been a steady process. There's been a lot of learning along the way, incorporating the schools, helping to realize where is a good place to plant trees, where is not such a good place. The issue of irrigation, really, really important. And educating the public about adopting and the importance of watering the trees that don't have regular irrigation to make sure they get a solid start. This has been going on since before and through the pandemic. There was an Arbor Day during the pandemic. Public, what did we call it? Social distancing was observed. I remember I couldn't go because we didn't have enough spots because we were doing social distancing. So, it's just a really, there's a lot of stories being built and knowledge and tradition being built in our community. And it's because of your leadership. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, shall we take a photo? Does someone have a camera?
I'll take.
Awesome. Thank you. Kevin, how are you?
Yeah. So, are you?
My mother. Like, you. My family. Everybody's fine. You're fine. Yeah, that's good. It's a good thing.
All right. So, that brings us to our consent calendar. We have seven items on our consent calendar this evening. And my first question to the council is, is there any council member who wishes to pull an item from or items from the consent agenda?
I don't want to pull, but I do have a comment. So, whenever you want.
Okay. Anyone? No? All right. Do you want to do the comment now?
Oh, sure. I'm happy to.
Please.
So, I just wanted to have people notice item four and item five because we have two complete projects. One is the Espinade and Palmetto Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project, and the other one is the Sharp Park Pedestrian Improvement Project. And, you know, these projects take a really long time. And so, it was an honor to be a part of it because they all came through OABAG, which is, I don't remember what the acronym stands for. Anyway, City and County Association of Governments funding. And it was just really important for me to be able to be there, to like read all of the applications, to be able to score them, and to be able to bring Pacifica's name and projects to the table. So, thank you to Public Works and everybody for doing a great job on those projects.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other comments? All right, public comment on the consent calendar? If anyone wishes to. I have some cards, but I didn't notice them being about. I have some cards, but I didn't notice them being about the consent calendar. So, if I'm mistaken on that, please let me know. Not seeing any. Assistant City Clerk, do you have anyone on the phone for this item?
No.
All right, then we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. Ready for a motion?
I move we approve the consent count.
A second? We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
The motion on consent made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Vice Mayor Bowles, the vote passes unanimously.
Okay. That, we are moving right along. We have public comment. And I'm just going to read a little statement here. I'm not always really good about this, so I'm going to try to be better. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the City Council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided that only items not on the agenda for tonight's meeting may be addressed. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If comments do not address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If the warning is not followed, I will direct the city clerk to cut the mic. Councilmembers, sometimes this comes up. Councilmembers will not be entering into dialogue with speakers under public comments on items not posted on tonight's agenda. That's a rough sentence. A maximum of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. So, this is comments for items not on tonight's agenda. And I have several cards. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So, three minutes, or as many minutes as you need that's less than three would be appreciated. And the first person is Ricardo Guerra, or Guerra, then followed by Jeff Moroso, and then Martin Idzvic. Idzvic, if I said that correctly. Thank you. Ricardo.
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
How are you guys? So, I've been here before about the violence, noncompliance, all of this, trying to avoid the fights and everything else. Now, I got into a lot of trouble for defending myself recently because the same people that were attacking me kicked my dog in the chest, threw fireworks at him, right? Police officers took their compliance here, right? That's my coincidence. I have five of these. Came in here crying, upset, stolen my dogs. People who stole my dogs are in Valimar, right? Working for the county. That's why I can't get any compliance or any help. They say, Ricardo, stay calm, stay calm. They take away my medication. They take away my service dogs. And I can't make a complaint. The last time I was in here, that officer put her hands on me, right? So, for them to be so smug about me being mean and malicious to other people, but I try to stop this over and over. Do the right thing, they say. 4,000 pages of proof. They want to lock me up for 11 years in prison. Seems that I didn't try to stop this at all. Being rude and nasty is one thing. But to pick a fight with me, to hurt my dog who was in traction for two days, I went to jail because of it? The same people that have restraining orders on. The same people that I said, these are service animals. An investigation, not one would do that for me. But they would have no problem that these people beating me up, taking my camp. You guys were here. I can no longer accept the fact that this cannot be helped, that you guys can't help me in this. So, what I did is I fired my attorney. And I'm subpoenaing all you guys. I have them right here. I'll deliver them in tomorrow so you can all go to court. Okay? And I'm trying to make it as easy as possible and complain for all of us. But something's got to be done. What they're saying that I did this on purpose, where I didn't try to stop it. But I have nine cases of them assaulting me with names and numbers. 23 others called to 911 with the same people. At the same time, I have officers like that putting their hand on me, right? I have no malicious intent for anybody. But I want my dogs back, and they live right here in Valimar. I confronted them not too long ago. And you know what they told me? Ha ha. I hope, good luck getting your dog back. That's what I was told. So, tomorrow, I'll be in your offices. And I hope you guys can help.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Thank you. Jeff Moroso, Martin Idzvic, and Michelle Stevenson.
Hello, I'm Jeff Moroso, and I've lived in the back of Valimar for 33 years. I apologize for my voice. I lost the nerves to my left vocal cord because of radiation and chemotherapy for throat cancer four years ago. We have a local group called Friends of Clara Creek Park. As you probably know, Clara Creek flows from the headwaters in the Golden Gate National Recreation Area through Valimar out to the ocean at Rockaway Beach. Clara Creek Park runs from Minerva to Amapola and is listed on all the maps as Clara Creek Park. We have swings and gathering areas and plans for major improvements. The Friends of Clara Creek Park is now a project of the Pacific Beach Coalition. We have regular workdays where we typically have 20 to 40 people help remove non-native invasive weed species and then plant and water natives. We often produce over 20 cubic yards of green waste. The city has done a great job of coming the next workday to remove the large piles of green waste. The city has also been working in Clara Creek Park to clear the culverts and generally make sure the creek is flowing freely. We greatly appreciate working with this city on this. The Parks, Beach, and Recreation Commission recently did a review of parks in the city. Unfortunately, Clara Creek Park has not been designated a park and therefore was not included in this review. I believe this was a missed opportunity for the city. Please designate Clara Creek Park as a park. It should be included in the list of city parks as it will continue to be a well-loved and well-used area in the heart of Pacifica. We have a native plant sale on November 15th from 10:00 to 2:00 at Pacifica Gardens at 8:30 Reseda Road. It's the perfect time to add water-saving, pollinator-attracting, habitat-creating natives to your garden. UC Master Gardeners will discuss the benefits of native plants and how to care for them. Native plant experts will be available to help you make your plant selections. And there is a native plant demonstration garden on site. I highly recommend you read some of Doug Tallamy's wonderful books like Nature's Best Hope and check out his Homegrown National Park website and learn how if we all band together and plant locally native plants in our yard and parks, we can bring back insects and birds and animals that have depended on native plants for millennia. Thank you for your time and consideration and all you do for our wonderful town that we are all so lucky to live in. I count my blessings every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Martin Idzvic, Michelle Stevenson, and then Aaron Clark.
Hi there.
Hello.
I'm a resident of Pacifica since 2003. Started my first business here in Pacifica in 2005 out of the spare bedroom of my home. And it grew over time, and now I have an office in the back of the valley. I own a vehicle registration service. I've been doing DMV work for the public here in the City of Pacifica. I've worked with a lot of the classic car community here in Pacifica as well. I also sponsor local events in the area with anything in regards to cars. Within this last year, I was approached by U-Haul Truck Share Program to add U-Haul Truck Share Service to my business, which I thought it was a great idea. I asked them if they checked all the zoning. They said they had, and they said there was another U-Haul Truck Share Program in the north end of Pacifica off of Drake Way, which is under a C1 zoning. I proceeded to operate this U-Haul operation, and I got approached by code enforcement and said that I was operating outside my zone itself, which I was rather shocked and stunned when I knew there was another one in the City of Pacifica operating for five years. I brought this to the assistant planners' attention, that I wanted to appeal this. I was told that I can pay another $577 to appeal something. And with the chance of me losing that appeal because I'd have to pay another $11,500 to possibly get the C1 zoning amended. I don't have this money. I don't think it should be up to me to come up with the money to amend a zoning in the City of Pacifica. By me writing this letter to, I think, Snodgrass, Katie Snodgrass, she's now sent code enforcement after the other U-Haul Truck Share Program in the City of Pacifica and now asked them to leave as well. So, we are now losing two businesses in the City of Pacifica. I'm friends with a lot of the other business owners here, and they're the ones that have asked me to come here and speak tonight. I was going to just throw it away and say, you know what? I'm going to move on. I'm going to do something else. But no, I feel like this is really important to be brought to you guys' attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Stevenson, Aaron Clark, and Miriam Fontaine.
Hello, my name is Michelle Stevenson, and I've come here as president of the Board of Pacifica School Volunteers. So, I wanted to update the City Council and our community members on what's going on with Pacifica School Volunteers, but I realized that perhaps people aren't aware of us, and I should introduce ourselves. Pacifica School Volunteers is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit founded in 1997 here in Pacifica by two wonderful women, one of whom I was delighted to run into tonight. one of whom I was delighted to run into tonight, Gail Benton Shoemaker and Claire Harrison. It provides a critical, yet so simple, solution to helping our students in the Pacifica School District. PSV, Pacifica School Volunteers, recruits, trains, and places community volunteers in Pacifica School District's elementary schools. It's very simple. Dedicated caring adult volunteers working one-on-one with struggling readers works miracles. And the recipe doesn't change. That's it. There's nothing whiz-bang, there's nothing high-tech. It doesn't change over the years. But it proves over and over and over again to improve our students' lives, giving them confidence as readers, helping our classroom teachers who have large classrooms, as we don't need to belabor funding cuts. It's a fantastic organization. And Gail and Claire founded it almost 28 years ago. We're beginning our 28th school year. We, similar to other organizations, the COVID years were hard. A lot of our volunteer base are retired, older folks. And they pivoted and learned Zoom to do breakout classrooms with our teachers. I just wanted to make sure PSV doesn't get lost in the shuffle. And everyone needs to be aware of the organization. We fly under the radar. We do great work. And we're here because we care about our kids. We care about other people's kids. We care about our community. And this community has supported us over the years. And I just want to thank the Pacifica community for always stepping up and helping Pacifica School Volunteers. Please don't hesitate to look us up and volunteer if you'd like. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Aaron Clark, Miriam Fontaine, Suzanne Moore.
Hi. Yeah, I came unprepared tonight, so I'm just gonna wing it. I know. It's all good. It's all good, though. Clara Creek Park, real quick. I mean, that's probably one of the oldest city parks. I imagine Oddstead and Imperial, maybe Pomo is old. We had a city manager that tried to get rid of that park, basically illegally. He knew he didn't have the authority to do it. He was forced to recant on that. But he spent at least $10,000 in staff time trying to push that through anyway. And for some reason, he wasn't fired over that. I don't understand that. But the bottom line is, what city manager tries to get rid of a city park? And the answer to that is one that has an antagonistic relationship with the public. And he did, and he still does. And when the city manager has an attitude like that, it filters down through staff. And that brings me to my next issue, which is business. I remember back when D&amp;D Cycles was on Pedro Point. At that time, it was the second-largest employer in the city. And when the owner, who was a friend of mine, went to get his license renewed, he thought there'd be, you know, no problem. But the city treated him so poorly that he relocated his business to San Bruno. And the city has had economic developers. They paid staff position to do that. And that position has never produced anything. So when I hear about this guy trying to run this small U-Haul business and being literally attacked by the city and the city, again, trying to run businesses out of town, city staff is paid to facilitate, to work with the public to help people achieve their goals. It's not at war with the public. And that's become, this city manager has put the city at war with the public. He's made it okay for city staff to act that way. And right now, he's gonna retire, which is great for the city. And realistically, he's not here tonight, which is great. But if he's still gonna be here a couple more months, the city just needs to take the loss, pay him out, and say, hey, don't let the door hit you on the way out because the next city manager's gonna have to come in and clean up a lot of the mess that this guy's made. This guy's been here nine years. And he spent tons of money on projects that nobody cares about. He hasn't done one project in his entire time with the city of Pacifica that anyway benefits anybody that lives in this town. Not one project that benefits anybody that lives here. So that kind of touches on what I was going on tonight. And I think this thing with this business, this U-Haul thing, needs to be looked into. And the city staff, they need to get their act together. So, thanks.
Thank you, Aaron. Miriam Fontaine, Suzanne Moore, Kaitlin Quinn.
Hello. My name is Miriam Fontaine. I am here today as a member of the Board of Directors at the Pacifica Resource Center. So as you're probably aware, the federal government shutdown will likely delay the federal food assistance benefit for programs such as CalFresh. County officials have stated that 35,000 San Mateo residents are recipients of CalFresh, the state's name for the supplemental nutrition assistance program SNAP, or sometimes known as food stamps. We live in an incredibly wealthy area, but we actually have a food insecurity crisis right here in San Mateo County. Demand for assistance is increasing due to inflation, reduced pandemic-era aid, and the high cost of living. Many residents are struggling to afford food and housing. And local organizations like PRC and Second Harvest are already facing challenges with the current demand. The federal government distributes about $6.5 million in CalFresh benefits to San Mateo County residents each month. As these assistance, as these benefits collapse, the ripple effects will be felt across grocery stores, families, children, and seniors. Losing $6.5 million a month in CalFresh benefits is a major concern. A reduction in these benefits will put even more pressure on local aid organizations like PRC to fill the gap. The Food Bank and other aid agencies will stretch as much as we can to meet the increased need. But we need community support. I'm here with a call to action. PRC and all the local aid organizations are asking for increased community support through donations and volunteering to meet the growing demand for food assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Moore, Kaitlin Quinn, Brian Renero.
Good evening, honorable council members, city staff, and Pacifica neighbors. Suzanne Moore from the Manor District, longtime housing advocate. And my thoughts this evening are my own. It may be linked to recent HUD funding cuts. I and Pacifica housing advocates are again hearing reports of an increased number of Section 8 evictions. You may recall a Coastside News article by reporter Catherine Wheeler from May informing readers of the Pacifica evictions. And evictions are again picking up. The Section 8 Housing Voucher is a federally funded program overseen by HUD and administered by public housing agencies. The program provides rental subsidies for qualified individuals and families. Approximately 68% benefits seniors, single-parent and low-income families with children, and the disabled. Nearly 75% of recipients are classified as extremely low income. In Pacifica, some recipients were formerly homeless. Housing advocates currently make these recommendations to our neighbors. One, it's hard to ask for help, but please notify your family and case manager. Sadly, some folks don't reach out for help. And you deserve the assistance that is available. Two, immediately report eviction threats or eviction notices to San Mateo County Legal Aid's Housing Advice Line, number 650-517-9811. And be prepared to send a copy of the letter. It is true that staff and attorneys at legal aid are busy right now, but they do want to help. So please reach out and document your contact. Three, the Pacifica Resource Center is our city's one-stop site for assistance in food, housing, and other essential services. Again, don't hesitate to ask for help. 1809 Palmetto Avenue. Website pacresourcecenter.org. Coastside News reporter Catherine Wheeler is considering a follow-up of her May article in Pacifica Section 8 Evictions. Catherine can be contacted at coastsidenewsgroup.com if you wish to share concerns. Housing advocates remain dedicated to the proposition that housing is a human right. Everyone deserves safe and affordable housing. And housing is necessary for the health and well-being of the individual, the family, and our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaitlin Quinn, Brian Renero, Lila Renero.
So eight years ago, my partner and I moved to Pacifica. And we bought our home. And it was my dream home. It's the first home I've ever owned. It took us until our mid-50s to be able to afford a home, especially here. And I work for a nonprofit, so I'm not rich. This is my dream home. And three years ago, it became a nightmare when the Marbella Lane Corporation purchased the home immediately next to ours and operated it as a full-time Airbnb. Earlier today, I sent you an email that charted for you 21 times over the past three years that the police have been called to abate issues at this unhosted STR at 1987 Beach Boulevard. That's 21 times within the past three years. And that's just the times that we and our other neighbors actually called the police. It's not all the times we've been woken up. It's not all the times we've had trespassers and people illegally dumping in our trash bins. This last episode that happened to us on October 19th, it's the most egregious one to date, with a Marbella Lane guest trespassing onto my property and disabling two of my security cameras. The Pacifica police were called and responded promptly, thank you, classifying the incident as a 602 trespassing and assigning it a case number. Perhaps worse than the incident itself is the fact that the Marbella Lane Corporation allowed this guest to remain at the property for another five nights. This, after being apprised by the police of what happened and being sent the video my cameras captured of the guest committing the crime. This placed me in the untenable position of having to sleep alone in a house that sits eight feet away from a violent, angry man who knows I called the police on him. These are not the actions of an STR operator who is responsible or one who treats our neighborhoods and residents with care and respect. Ordinance number 835, currently in effect in the coastal zone, states, quote, "The administrator may suspend or revoke an STR permit after making a determination that the perma-te is operating the STR in a manner that is detrimental to the public health, welfare, or safety, or constitutes a nuisance." How can what happened at 1987 Beach last Sunday? Sorry. How can what happened at 1987 Beach last Sunday and what's been happening for the past three years, evidenced by 21 police visits, not be termed detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare? And at the very least, not be considered a nuisance? I am truly at the end of my rope here. I'm sorry. I apologize for the drama. Please do not renew this STR's permit. If it has been renewed, please revoke it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Renero, Lila Renero, Dave McCarrill.
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, Vice Mayor Bowles, and councilpersons. I'm talking, of course, about today, 1987 Beach in support of Caitlin. I was also disturbed by the video that I saw of trespassing and violent disablement of her security cameras. As everyone here should well know, incidents at 1987 Beach Boulevard are unfortunately a far-too-common occurrence. Last August, a person at 1987 Beach Boulevard associated with Marbella Lane stole the political signs from the adjacent neighboring properties off of their lots. And there's no reprimand that has occurred for that. This is just one in a series of many incidents and disturbances that have occurred at this property. If we were to put aside the great many police reports caused by this particular property, the address of 1987 Beach Boulevard should be familiar and notorious with the council as well as the city manager due to the great many complaints that have been voiced here. As the council, city council, city manager, and city staff are all aware, the STR at 1987 Beach is operated by Marbella Lane, accompanied with several other SDRs in Pacifica, many of which have their long histories of violations and disturbances. The question is, why has the city failed to hold a revocation hearing for this property? Given that this STR and Marbella Lane have generated so many disturbances, any reasonable person would expect this STR would have had a hearing, if not a complete revocation of its permit, long ago. What does it take for a problematic STR to trigger a revocation hearing? Please do not mistake this as a rhetorical question. Given that this is not the first time that a revocation hearing has been requested for 1987 Beach, the time has come for the city manager to state clearly what the city's criteria for holding a revocation hearing is. If the revocation criteria is subjective, the city manager has taken it upon himself to determine when an STR warrants a revocation hearing. I expect the city manager to explain clearly his rationale for allowing this particular STR to continue operating without a permit. It's important that Pacificans are confident that their city enforces code reliably and consistently. The city has followed a pattern of inaction in regard to enforcement. We reported that 400 Belfast had converted a garage into an unpermitted habitable space. It took four years before an inspection occurred and a red tag. There's been 121 service calls made to the police over disturbances at SDRs around Pacifica. I ask, what number of revocation hearings have been done during this period of time over the past four years? Has the city performed any revocation hearings at all? I think that we deserve an explanation in this clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Lila Renero, Dave McCarrill, Anita Reese.
Good evening, Mayor Beckmeyer, Vice Mayor Bowles, city council members, staff, and fellow Pacificans. Lila Renero here. I'm here tonight to provide backup support to my soul sister Caitlin Quinn. In fact, the last time I was here speaking in August, I was doing the same thing. I sent a lengthy public comment letter earlier today, and I won't rehash the entire email here tonight. The bottom line is that the property next to Caitlin has yet again had another renter trespass on her property and vandalized their security cameras. I've had total PTSD hearing my friend's story about hostile guests vandalizing her property as we have dealt with similar issues in the past. It's a scary, nerve-wracking, sleep-depriving, stomachache-inducing experience which leaves you feeling completely helpless. You can call the police. But if you decide to press charges, you feel completely vulnerable to retaliation by the renters who have already proven themselves to be hostile. They know where you live, but you have no idea to know where they live. The bottom line is that this permit for Marbella Lane owned and operated property at 1987 Beach Boulevard needs to be removed as expeditiously as possible. Please make this happen without further haste. On a completely different note, I'm sad about the number of businesses that we have been losing, the most recent casualties being Coastside Auto Repair and Starbread. Where are my kids gonna get their senior eat-a-bread fix? I've never had another car service provider who would drop me back off at home and pick me up when my vehicle was ready. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Dave McCarrill, Anita Reese. And the last card I have is Sue Degree.
Good evening. I don't believe I've addressed this body this century. So it's been a second. And if I'm out of order, please call me. I have a few items. I will keep it under three minutes. I do want to thank all of you sitting behind those desks for your involvement, your dedication to the place I call home, staff, everyone else who hears outside their normal business hours. All right, first issue that can be a city issue is recology of the coast. Some of us pride ourselves in our environmental consciousness. I certainly do. I recycle everything I can. The recycle yard on Palmetto is wonderful, but it's lacking a few things that, and again, I'm not here to point fingers, call you guys names, tell you you're not doing your job. This is just to put it on your radar. They need to up, or you guys need to put some pressure when they're getting their next contract, to have a bin for household, excuse me, household solvents, not easily disposable, okay? Pressure-treated wood. I've gone down to Ox, whatever they call it, Ox Mountain. I mean, you can't get rid of pressure-treated lumber in the city of Pacifica. What does a layperson do in the garbage where it's not supposed to be? We want to do the, I certainly want to do the right thing. We need facilitation locally. Same thing with green waste, you know? We're all talking about Arbor Day coming up and the trees going in. I have a lot of trees on my property, and I go through them twice a year. I had to pay someone $300 to haul it out of there today because I couldn't load it up in my pickup truck and recycle it locally. So maybe getting recology back in the conversation about getting a green bin there. Secondly, I live in the neighborhood of Rockaway. I'm in the southernmost street called Copeland. It's right near Seabowl Lane. I walk every day, as do a lot of my neighbors. It's become a very popular bike route. There's no way of getting across Fassler. There's no way of getting from Fassler to Roberts Road, even to Seabowl Lane. I have an elderly neighbor, you guys have probably noticed him, he's on Roberts Road every day, orange jacket, cane, gray beard. I'm surprised he hasn't been run over. Crosswalks, speed bumps, some kind of speed mitigation on that westbound, especially the westbound lanes of Fassler would be nice. 2029 is when the Rockaway Beach neighborhood is going to get their new pavements, their new asphalt. Every street in my neighborhood, but the one I live on, is getting new asphalt. So, doesn't happen till 2029? Again, I'm just putting this on your radar. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anita Reese, Sue Degree, and Marge Davis.
Hello, Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. And I just wanted to share that we continue to be open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, 9:00 to 5:00, Wednesday, 9:00 to 7:00, Friday, 9:00 to 1:00, and one Saturday a month, 9:00 to 1:00. We are closed for lunch Monday through Thursday, 12:30 to 1:30. I wanted to also share that our Unhoused on the Coast outreach team will respond to requests for outreach to unhoused folks in Pacifica and along the coast through Pascodaro every day, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, 9:00 to 5:00. And Saturday, Sunday, nine to five. And if you see someone living outside, or sleeping outside, or in a vehicle, please email us at ucutreach@pacresourcecenter.org, or give us a call at 650-452-6279. I almost couldn't read my writing there. I did want to share that I did check our, we map where unhoused folks are throughout the county. And in Pacifica, as of today, there are 91 unhoused folks, eight encampments, and of those eight encampments, there are 52 folks living in those eight encampments, and there are 39 individuals who are not in any particular encampment. I did want to note that two of those encampments are PSPP. So when you deduct those numbers of folks, 18 folks, two encampments, there are 73 folks in Pacifica that are unhoused currently. These are all folks that we have made contact with and continue to work with over time. So I just wanted to give you, and I'll start to continue to give you those updates, just so you have a sense of like how that's changing over time. There is going to be a one-day homeless count in January, so if any of you are interested in participating or would like to participate again, we will be sharing information about how to get trained and participate in that. It will happen very early morning on a Thursday. I think it's the last Thursday of the month. We generally start by 5:00 AM, and we're done by 10:00. Other thing that we're working on right now is our holiday programs. So Thanksgiving program, we provide gift cards and groceries. Our goal is to provide support to 200 families. We are asking for folks to provide $30 gift cards to either Safeway or Grocery Outlet, if you can, as well as any groceries that you would like to provide, so that we can increase the number of folks that we serve this year. We are having our distribution earlier this month. It's going to be on November 12th at the American Legion Hall and November 15th at our pantry, but we will continue to serve folks all the way up to November 26th, and we'll take donations as long as you give them. For Holiday Joy, we match families with children under the age of 18 with generous donors and sponsors who shop for gifts for children and families. So if you need help for the holidays or want to give for the holidays, please call us at 650-738-7470, or email us at info@pacresourcecenter.org.
Thank you. Sue Degree, Marge Davis, and Marge Davis is the last card I have.
Hi, good evening. This is probably a memo or just a heads-up. So I know that council members go to meetings for, for example, housing. So just a reminder that when you're hearing about, if you also speak up about persons who have a developmental disability, because their need is different than others, plus side for that is regional center, state regional center, so the state regional center and the Department of Developmental Services can be helpful to you, because those clients that are housed through other agencies, such as Brilliant Corners, Choices, something, Healthy Choices, whatever it is, got mixed up on that one, they get wraparound services. And so if they get housing, which would be needed by all these housing grants, et cetera, and through the nonprofits, they get wraparound services, which means that those persons have extra eyes on them to support them and help them, so you're not going to have trashy problems. If anything goes wrong, those agencies help to sort it out. Developmental disability people, one thing to think about is that most of them may not have the verbal skills and the employment skills that the rest of us have, but with the wraparound services, they can do a lot of volunteer work, part-time work, and even full-time work. We have people here in our Safeways, for example, doing a great job. But some can't, like my son, not verbal. If he had to move to Los Angeles, he would say hi. I would not be able to know what's going on, really. And if he was sad about something or mad about something, look at how many miles there is. And so there are many, many of our citizens like that that have raised here, they're well-known in the city, and their only option would be to go to Los Angeles, some other state. So if you keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. So I didn't prepare anything, and I'm going to try and make this make sense. But I was moved by what Caitlin said and what Lila said, and I think it's obvious to all of us that they have not been desensitized to what's going on in their homes and their neighborhoods. And I don't know if you all saw the video, but I have not been exposed to this, and I did see the video, and personally, I think Caitlin was being mighty polite. What I saw was a young man in a skulking and menacing manner, and I want to reject, you know I'm not a drama queen. You know me well enough to know that, and very matter-of-fact. In a skulking and menacing manner, attempting to disguise his identity with the obvious intent and to vandalize and/or destroy personal property on another homeowner's property. It was more than trespassing, and he was then allowed to remain on the premises. The victim got to live next door to the perpetrator for the next five days. It literally kind of makes me sit in my stomach. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Our homes should be the safest place that we can be and a sanctuary. That is being stolen from Caitlin, from Lila, and Brian, and all the other members of the community that are putting up with this while we don't take action. And I know we're overworked, understaffed, but when it is so egregious and so obvious as what is going on in the home next to, well, it's not a home, the Airbnb next to Caitlin, I really think we need to take action. Who is Marbella Lane that we are allowing them to disrupt the tranquility, the security, and the peacefulness, the safety of our neighborhoods? Why have we not taken action? It's obvious, it would be warranted, and it needs to be done. On a separate note, but I want that to sink in for a second. I'm going to catch my breath. PRC Pantry always needs community support, always looking for donations. I have this little thing I do where I'm at Grocery Outlet, and I see a screaming deal on something, especially protein, buy a case of it. It's usually $25 to $30. Take it down to Rose. That's community support and involvement that we can all do, just on a one-off. And to Jeff Moroso's comment about the native plant sale at Pacifica Gardens, it's our 17th. It's the native plant sale that we're known for, and we'd love to see you there, November 15th. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone?
We have two raised hands. The first is for Clifford Lawrence.
Cliff, please go ahead.
Good evening. This is Clifford Lawrence. Thank you, honorable mayor and vice mayor. First, I would like to say tonight, we should all celebrate democracy. I thank you for this platform. I thank you for all the people that you have allowed to come forward and say their peace, say their grievance. This is community. It's democracy. We need to listen, and we need to preserve this platform. Besides the person who brought up the issue of the business of you all that is being challenged in this area, I want to bring to your attention, have for some time, want to bring to your attention, the fact that we've lost two of our three pharmacies. We now have considerable vacant space there, but worse, we have lost the ability to meet a very important need in this community. Now, who's working on this? Who's approaching companies? Who's working with those local landlords who have now this open space to see if they can bring in, say, CVS, for example? But our one pharmacy cannot handle the demand. We are forcing people to do their business outside our community. This is not what we want. We don't want it for them, we don't want it for our business, we don't want it for our economy. You talk about sustainable economy, and I ask, what are you doing? There's something right in front of us. Please, please, listen to the people. I want to say, maybe not your city manager sometimes, you are the bosses. City council, it is you I want running this show. Thank you. Thank you. I thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Assistant City Clerk?
The next raised hand is for Cindy Abbott.
Hello, Cindy, please go ahead.
Good evening. Cindy Abbott here. Also thanking you for the opportunity to be able to speak this evening. And in response to Mayor Beckmeyer's call earlier, I won't repeat everything that's been said about the egregious operation that's being run out of 1987 Beach Boulevard, but I will align myself with all of those comments that were made tonight. And I too want to know, how many reports of violations, months and years of detailed documentation of noise, garbage, trespassing, tampering with personal property, that's resulted in code enforcement complaints, police response, and even a lawsuit filed with the county district attorney? How many of those does it take, and how much time does it take for action to finally be taken? I hope that during the week ahead, that there will be response to Caitlin Quinn to finally address this issue and to ensure that what we've heard about is finally addressed and remedied. This is a time when short-term rental permits are being renewed, and with such a track record of violations, nuisance complaints, and law enforcement, police out all the time, we really need to have something be done. And we need to understand too what the ongoing process is going to be, as those of us in the coastal zone will continue to be, have these kinds of things inflicted on us. So please, take some action finally. Now is the time to do this. Do not renew, or make sure that that permit is revoked, and let us know as a community how you'll be addressing these issues in the coastal zone until we finally get the relief that we all need here. But first and foremost, please take care of that situation at 1987 Beach Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others?
There are no other raised hands.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. And I don't have lights, but the vice mayor is leaning in to her microphone, yes?
I was just going to suggest that maybe we could take a quick five-minute break?
I think that's a grand idea. So it's 7:20. Let's keep our eye on the clock, 7:25, please. 7:25, please. Thank you, everyone. We're moving to our consideration item for this evening. I mean, one of them. The first one is appointments to the Climate Action and Resilience Committee and Beautification Advisory Committee. We will be appointing four individuals to four full-year terms for the Climate Action and Resilience Committee. Those terms will expire October 2029. And three individuals to two-year terms to expire October 2027. And two youth to one-year terms to expire October 2026. That's for Climate Action and Resilience Committee. For beautification, we have two partial terms to expire March 2026. City Clerk Coffey, do you have a report or anything you want to tell us or suggest?
Council members, for the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, this is a new committee that was formed by City Council on September 8th, 2025, by Resolution Number 85-2025, for a nine-member committee, including two youth members and seven non-youth members. Youth members are defined as members between the ages of 14 and 25 with one-year terms, with the option to renew up to four years. And because this is a new committee, the non-youth terms are full four-year terms. But we are recommending to stagger those expiration dates. So appointing four to four-year terms and then three members to two-year terms so that we don't have a full turnover in any particular year. The city received 13 applications timely for the Climate Action and Resilience Committee. And for the Beautification Advisory Committee, there were two vacancies by that were that were formed by resignations on that committee. And the non-expired portions of those terms will expire in March 2026. So we're looking to fill those vacancies for the unexpired portion of those terms. We received four timely applications for the Beautification Advisory Committee. The city also recruited for the Economic Development Committee, the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, and the Library Advisory Committee. Due to the number of positions being recruited for and the number of applicants, the city needed to split the applicant interview dates into two different meetings. The second interview date will be held tomorrow. And those are focused on the Economic Development Committee, Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, and the Library Advisory Committee. Some applicants did indicate interest in multiple committees or commissions. And some of those that had indicated interest in the Climate Action and Resilience Committee and the Beautification Advisory Committee also indicated interest in some of the other committees that we'll be interviewing for tomorrow. Because those that indicated multiple interest were scheduled for the interview date on October 20th so that they may be considered for the Climate Action and Resilience Committee and/or the Beautification Advisory Committee, to which appointments are being recommended tonight. The appointments for the Economic Development Committee, Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission and Library Advisory Committee is scheduled to be made at the meeting, City Council meeting, on November 10th due to the interview date being scheduled for tomorrow, for the remainder. At this time, we are looking at appointments for the Climate Action and Resilience Committee and the Beautification Advisory Committee, as the mayor stated.
All right, council members. So before us, we're going to be making a total of nine appointments this evening. Councilmember Beer, since you said it 100 times last Tuesday night, can you refresh my memory? And for the public to find the public, the youth, the youth seat, and what that means in the context of this committee?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have two youth seats, which are voting seats. We're very excited about that. Each youth seat is for one year and can be renewed four times. So for four terms. I mean, four one-year terms.
And the age?
Oh, 14 to 25.
Thank you. And just so the public is aware, we had a very consistent process wherein we were screening to find out who was interested in a youth seat by asking every candidate, defining what the youth seat was, the terms, et cetera, the eligibility, and then asking each candidate what they are applying for a youth seat or a non-youth seat. And we were very, we were very methodical in that way. So we have our work before us. Does anyone have a particular way that they'd like to suggest we go about this? Do we want to, for example, focus on the youth seats first? Do we want to focus on the four-year seats? Like, how do we want to do this?
I mean, let's do the youth seats first.
Okay.
Because there's a lot on the other side.
Yep, there are. All right. Three candidates is my count. All indicated interest in the youth seats, and we have two youth seats.
And two of the youth also express interest in other seats.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Yes.
I believe Ethan also expressed interest in the library advisory. Is that correct?
That's what I have in my notes, yes.
Mayor, before deliberation and/or nominations, we'll need public comment on this.
Oh, yes, that's a good idea. Thank you. Public comment on the item of appointments to the Climate Action and Resilience Committee and the Beautification Advisory Committee. I don't have any cards. Is there anyone in the audience? Yes, please come. You do. You do. And actually, guess what? You need to fill out another card, not right now, before you leave. If you would, please.
Yeah, I'm flying from the seat of my pants. But it excites me any time you mention the word youth.
Yeah.
And I know there's only two seats, and I believe there's whatever, 12? How many? I think you should kind of open your hearts and open your chairs to accommodate all of them. Because the last thing I would hate to see is discouragement of the people who don't get appointed. That's my 10 cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And anybody on the phone? Assistant City Clerk?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. Then seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Youth seats?
I appreciate the comment from the public. It's very important. And I do know that there's a couple of the youth that have shown interest in other seats. And so we'll be talking, we'll be having more interviews tomorrow night and talking about those other youth seats in the other committees and commissions as well. Just so that's clear.
Yes.
But yeah, so I'll just, I just would like to nominate Calvin Chan and Miley Velichko. I don't know how to say it.
Velichko.
Velichko. Velitko.
Velikko. Yes, Velikko.
I'll second that one.
Yeah.
Do we want to ask for further nominations?
Are there any other nominations for youth seats?
I'll just, I'll just make a comment. Maybe. Sure, it's a nomination. Maybe it's a nomination. Myla expressed interest in beautification, which we're also looking at today. And I, my understanding is there aren't any youth on that committee, and there are no other youth that applied for that committee. So, and I think that was her priority interest, from what I remember from the interview.
That is a good question.
So, so anyway, I was thinking Calvin and Ethan and then Myla for beautification.
But we don't have a youth seat on beautification.
But I think we talked about it being a possibility. Like, we've applied, we've appointed youth to EDC before, for example.
City Clerk, can you clarify? With a youth member that applies for a committee wherein there is no designated youth seat, is that application treated as a standard application?
Correct. It's treated as a standard application. For instance, for the Beautification Advisory Committee, these are for unexpired portions of partial terms that would expire in May, sorry, March of 2026. But normally, for like a full, a full seat, it would be a full four-year term. And then, you know, if the member can't fulfill the four years, then they could resign. And we would fill that vacancy.
Understood. Thank you. And Vice Mayor, in my notes, I have the priority order for Miley was BAC, CARC, and LAC. Is that what you had?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then for Ethan, I have his priority as
Library.
Library, and then CARC.
So it's the second choice for both of them. But she's the only youth that has applied to the beautification.
Right.
That was the only point I wanted to make. I'm happy with either one, really.
I think it feels, it feels right for the, well, we're not talking about that yet.
Yeah.
We can't talk about that.
This is where it's really awkward to not be appointing everything all at once because I think there were at least six youth for the two seats for library, right? So that's going to be a much harder conversation when it comes to.
Interesting.
And terrific.
Right.
And terrific.
Terrific.
What we have?
I'm tending to agree with the public comment. I wish that we could appoint them all. I feel horrible about having to say no to somebody.
Right.
But I think there might be a way to have a seat for everybody since they express different committees.
On beautification, you think?
Yeah. For beautification, I'm not sure if we have a one-year term yet.
We don't. And that's what I was asking the city clerk. It's, but it is a partial term that on beautification that we're filling tonight? Two partial terms, yes?
Yeah.
And so it is a shorter term by virtue of that? In fact, it's a super short term, right?
Right.
Yeah.
For a few months.
It's a few months.
Only till March 2025.
Yeah.
Oh, and then we're actually supposed to be reviewing the beautification charter before March.
Yes, we are.
So that could change.
Oh, okay, well.
Yeah, I would like to point out that we have an opportunity to do something around gender equity as well in this, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should, we should leave it along the way it is. And because it's only one-year term renewable. So, and then I
What do you mean by leaving it the way it is?
Oh, Miley.
Motion in a second.
Well, maybe I need to re-
So there is a motion on the floor. It's been seconded.
Yes. And we're discussing.
Yes.
Yes, we're discussing it still.
Just reminding there's
Thank you. No, it's fine.
And this was the easy one, right?
I know. But let's see. I think because the two youth, the three youth we have, they can interchange because each term is only one year. So they can go back to the different committees if they wish.
For the committees that have youth seats on them.
Right. And maybe having a boy and a girl for the youth, I think is a great idea.
Is that what you were referring to? Gender equity, sir?
Yes, I think is a
Well, she's asking, Greg.
Well, but I want to hit, touch back on the, on the beautification committee. Because I think that's an opportunity for us to seat all three of these young people tonight. And then, like you said, by then, we'll have discussed the beautification committee charter. So I like that idea a lot because it allows us to seat all three. So I think I'd like to rescind my motion.
Amend.
You can amend. You can.
You can amend, or you can withdraw the motion. The maker of the second has to withdraw the motion as well. So both of you have to withdraw the motion.
I want to keep it.
She wants to keep it.
But the maker of the motion can also amend the motion with the acceptance of the second.
Okay, well, personally, I would like to seat all three of these young people tonight.
Okay. We have a suggestion. Perhaps we could turn our attention, after we finish this one, to the BAC. We could work on that. If that would be in any way helpful.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. We can do whatever we want.
Well, should we do the BAC first?
We can also do that.
Change the order.
But we have a motion and a second.
We already started something here.
Okay, so I'm going to change my motion then. I think that Calvin Chan
No, it's okay. Go ahead, change it.
And Ethan, and Ethan Ing for the Climate Action and Resiliency Committee, youth seats. What do you think, second? Seconder?
Could you repeat that?
Calvin and Ethan.
For Oh, I do want to have the equity and inclusion for the two young ones. I don't know.
The balance.
Yeah, the balance in the two young, one girl and a boy.
Well, I think
Because Ethan also expressed interest in library, too.
That's correct.
Oh, six? Oh, they have six.
But Mayor, I mean, Vice Mayor, your recollection was about the priority order for Miley Velichko.
And, and, yeah, it was her first choice. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, guys. Yeah, go ahead.
We have a motion in a second.
So the maker of the motion is amending the motion to be, where are the names?
Calvin and Ethan.
Calvin and Ethan. Calvin Chan and Ethan Ing. And the seconder of the motion is in agreement with that?
I am.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And with the motion to appoint Calvin Chan and Ethan Ing to the youth terms on the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, the motion was made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Councilmember Espinoza. The vote passes unanimously.
Very well. Did you want to go straight to BAC then?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
All right. Who would like to speak? I have no lights.
Can we do them one at a time?
Yes, we can do anything we want within reason and the bounds of the law.
Because I would like to nominate our youth volunteer.
Yeah. For one of the
For one of those two seats and just put that out there.
So I'll second that motion. Are you speaking of Miley Velichko?
I cannot pronounce the last name. I cannot pronounce the last name, my apologies.
Velichko. Motion to appoint. We can discuss.
Discuss, I'm all for that.
We have a motion and a second. No discussion to appoint Miley to.
Beautification.
Pardon me?
I like Miley, yeah.
Okay. Motion and a second.
Motion and a second?
Yeah.
Please vote.
Which councilmember seconded the motion? Thank you. And with the motion to appoint Miley Velichko to the partial term on the Beautification Advisory Committee for the term to expire March 2026, made by Councilmember Wright and seconded by Mayor Beckmeyer, the motion passes unanimously.
And we have three seated youth positions, three applicants and three youth seated on committees and commissions.
Yeah, but now comes the hard part.
Now, councilmembers, we are going to be appointing four, four-year terms.
One more seat for beautification, maybe.
Oh, you wanted to do all, I thought you said you only wanted to do one.
I just wanted to do.
He only wanted to do one.
One at a time.
Oh, but you want to do. But you want to do the second one of BAC right now? Is that correct, Vice Mayor, please?
Yeah, let's just get it over with.
Go right ahead.
Well, I'm just curious hearing from you, but I appreciated reading about Deborah Solitz, that she's been a regular volunteer with the BAC and she's been studying horticulture. And that seems like something that would be helpful.
For beautification.
I would love to hear from our council representative to BAC, what they think.
For Deborah?
No, for, for any of them. Who do you think would be a good addition to the people already on BAC?
You guys got me. Oh, Jesus.
Deborah wasn't able to make the interview.
Oh, she wasn't able to make it?
I think there was a person that I. And what are, oh, those are the people that we have right now for the. And Deborah Solitz was not a.
What, what do you think the committee needs right now?
The committee needs people who wanted to, to able to, like, having, going for cleanups, who we usually do. And then it's outside of, just not going to the meeting. So people who are able to participate when we're doing the cleanup.
Nice.
Well, I, I'm aligning myself with the Vice Mayor's suggestion and would second the motion for Deborah Solitz. In her qualifications, she states, "I volunteered over 10 times with the Beautification Committee." And that she has, over, when she moved into her parents' house, she immediately redid the garden with, redesigned the garden with the Horticulture and Climate of Pacifica in mind. These seem like the kind of skills that we're looking for.
Great.
So I'll second.
I'd just like to reiterate that I hope that these people apply again.
Absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that.
And I don't like saying no to people that want to benefit their community.
I know.
And it's a, this is the worst part of the job.
This is very difficult. And, and it's great when we see, especially in the committees that have active volunteering opportunities, like BAC and Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, et cetera, to be able to come out and turn out and be part of that. But anyone is certainly welcome to any of these committee meetings. They're open to the public.
Yeah, and also I'd love to just like let the community know, like, we had so many people come out. And every single time, like, there was a couple of times where I was brought to tears. Like, these people are just incredible. And so our community is super awesome. That's what makes this so hard.
Yeah. And just one other thing on this, I mean, Remy Tan is already graciously serving on our Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee. We just, you know, we just appointed Miley. And Floriann has applied for two other committees, so we can still consider her, too. So so far, we're not saying no to anybody.
Thank you for pointing that out, Vice Mayor. All right.
I also think it's important for people to know that just because you're not on the committee does not mean that you can't show up to beautification committee.
Thank you for.
Opportunities.
What I was.
That's what I was going to say. You are welcome to come when we're doing cleanups.
Absolutely. So motion and a second for Deborah Solitz for the Beautification Advisory Committee. Do you have it noted, City Clerk?
I believe I heard the motion made by Mayor Beckmeyer and the second by Councilmember Beer. Is that right?
I think the motion was made by the Vice Mayor.
Okay.
And I seconded.
Thank you.
I think.
Yes.
It was a while ago.
Maybe I didn't officially motion it, but.
I think you did.
Yeah, you did.
Maybe not. Do you move?
So now the motion made by Vice Mayor Bowles and seconded by Mayor Eckmeyer.
All right. Please vote. You voted already.
And the motion to appoint Deborah Solitz to the partial term to expire March 2026 for the Beautification Advisory Committee, made by Vice Mayor Bowles, seconded by Mayor Beckmeyer, passes unanimously.
Great. All right, now.
I move we break the rules and nominate them all.
I, I was going to suggest, because some of the applicants only applied for two-year terms. And so maybe we look at, would it be helpful to just look at two-year terms first and then four-year terms?
Yes, yes. I always want to give people.
I mean, obviously, we can consider everybody for a two-year term, but.
But if there's a stated preference.
There are multiple things, too.
The, the people who, who said they were only interested in a two-year term are Margot Myman, Celeste Longy, and Lauren Murphy.
Does that change anyone's calculus from anything you had in mind?
Took away one of my four-year people.
Uh-oh, retrow.
Can you say them again?
Margot Myman, Celeste Longy, and Lauren Murphy.
Lauren Murphy. Okay. And Vice Mayor, you did say that Floriann.
Floriann, too.
For a different.
She, she's, yes, so she's, she's down for a four-year term, but she also applied for EDC.
That's right. That's right.
For the three, Floriann applied for the three, the two-year term.
And then Michael also expressed interest in emergency preparedness.
Correct.
Hard. Okay, well.
Okay, I got, I got mine written down, but I'm negotiable.
Are you still on the two-year question, Greg?
No, I sort, it affected everything.
You've redone your whole calculus, okay. So Vice Mayor, are you making a motion at this point?
Um, I wasn't, but maybe, maybe instead of a motion, I, one of the things we've done before is like, we all say what our top are, and then we can see where we agree and where we might want to talk about.
Where I run into trouble with that is that I have people listed for things we're not able to vote on yet.
Oh, no.
And that, that has affected my decision.
Well, and, and so do I, quite honestly, but that's where I, like, read the resumes.
Yeah.
You know, ahead of time, right?
Yeah. So.
Are we going to be doing the two-year term?
That's what we've been discussing.
Three is three.
If we just want to talk about the two-year term, I think those three people would be amazing. Margot Myman, Celeste Longy, and Lauren Murphy, I don't, I didn't know before, but she's a data analyst, analyst. And she does organizational psychology. And everything I'm reading about climate change adaptation is that we really need psychologists.
Yes, sociologists and, yes.
So, I mean, I really love the three of them.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we appoint Margot Myman, Celeste Longy, and Lauren Murphy to the two-year terms to the Climate Action and Resiliency Committee.
And that's like the staggered, right?
That's, yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Because those, those are two-year, they'll be replaced in two years.
Got it.
Those positions, but, and in addition, those individuals specifically stated preference for a two-year.
Okay, I'll second that.
Any discussion, do you?
Any further discussion? All right, City Clerk, did you get that?
Have the motion made by Vice Mayor Bowles to appoint Celeste Longy, Margot Myman, and Lauren Murphy to the two-year terms on the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, seconded by Councilmember Beer.
Yes, second, I mean, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, councilmembers, at this point, according to my calculus, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people still in consideration.
Six.
Oh, six.
For four spots.
For four spots.
Oh, seven, yeah.
Seven.
So at this juncture, I entertain anything. You know, whether it be a motion for a single individual, a stated preference, something that you saw in their application or their interview that made, that stood out to you.
I'm, I'm going to nominate, can I nominate now?
Of course.
Deirdre Martin. And, oh, just one, maybe.
So do one? Okay, Deirdre Martin.
Are we going down the line? I wanted to let other people, because I.
Yeah, I, I'm sure, and I also wanted to say a couple of things, like, so. So say.
Say.
So Ellen, right now, is on OSPEC. And she stated in her interview that she had served for eight years and, and was ready to move on. Remy is on OSPEC. Those are my, only my two considerations. So I would like to nominate Ellen as well.
Yes.
So there's Deirdre and Ellen.
So we don't have to do them all in a slate? It can be one, 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 it could be two?
It might affect other people's considerations, depending on the motion.
Oh, I see, so.
So for, for me, it would be helpful to understand how to juggle.
I see. Okay.
So one by one?
Because it's a little horse trading.
I think he's thinking together, all together.
Four together.
Because part of my thinking is, is like was mentioned before, there are some people that are currently serving. And I don't mean that that should disqualify anybody. But in terms of having an opportunity to serve as a community, I think that's part of what we're trying to do here, is build community. And the more people we have involved, the better job we're doing of building community. And it has nothing to do with the qualifications or intent of, of any of the people that are applying. Additionally, I think Michael has some expertise in emergencies. And I would love to have us avail ourselves of that expertise. However, we're not hearing that tonight, nor are we aware of who else is applying yet, and we haven't interviewed them yet. It's just part of what I factored into my thoughts.
Thank you for sharing that, Councilmember Wright.
He's not done.
Oh, thank you for continuing to share your thoughts, Councilmember Wright.
Well, why don't you suggest a name or to the.
Well, I was going to add that EDC is, is relatively important to me as well. And having someone who's interested in serving on that committee, I, I want to offer that support as well. Same rationale. So that limits the field, so.
Right. So then it's Michaela, Deirdre, Ellen, and Joy.
Yes.
I can get behind those four.
Yeah, we can live with that.
I think they're all fabulous.
They are all fabulous.
Mm-hmm.
That's the problem.
I think everyone who applied is fabulous.
That's the problem.
But it's a fabulous slate to apply. Really.
People would say it's a good problem to have unless you're sitting here.
Indeed, indeed. Well, I just want to say, wait, do we have a second? We're not discussing yet.
I think we're done.
We're done?
Yeah.
Okay, so someone moved and we have a second?
I don't think anybody moved yet.
Okay.
No.
Didn't we? I just like threw the.
I rationaled.
Yeah. Is that a term in, in either Roberts or Rosenberg?
I think Councilmember Espinoza had mentioned one name formally. So if we can have her amend the motion to include all of the names that are being proposed.
Could you guys remind me all of the names?
You mentioned Deirdre.
Deirdre.
Deirdre Martin.
Ellen Nadeason.
Joy Richardson.
Joy Richardson.
Michaela Jennings.
Jennings.
Oh, okay, I'll second it.
Okay.
Is that what we're waiting for?
Yes. Second, we have, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Espinoza, was it Martin Jennings Richardson?
And Nadeason.
And Nadeason. And the second?
Me.
Mary was from Beer, Councilmember Beer.
Mm-hmm.
And the vote to appoint to the four-year terms on the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, Deirdre Martin, Michaela Jennings, Joy Richardson, and Ellen Nadeason, made by Councilmember Espinoza, seconded by Councilmember Beer, passes unanimously.
It's also my hope that they wow us the same way they did in coming up with their original work.
I have.
It was just amazing.
I will be amazed if that doesn't happen. And I just wanted to make a personal note that the, the person in my experience of council service that has had the most impact in terms of leadership and impact on me, in terms of bringing these issues to the fore, in terms of making this the part of the work of the city council and part of our responsibility, is Deirdre Martin.
Yes.
So I was so pleased when Kai joined the Carp, 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 Car.
Task force.
The task force. And then seeing, it just feels like a full circle moment to have Deirdre appointed. So I think we're in for some good work and some good progress.
That just gave me the chills, because I second that, absolutely, yeah. Deirdre inspired me so much and taught me so much, so.
There are many, many things in Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee that have been mentioned there, have been brought forward. I'm like, oh, yeah, Deirdre said that three years ago. Oh, yeah, Deirdre said that four years ago. So, thanks, Deirdre.
And we look forward to talking about other expertise the next time we have this discussion.
Absolutely, because there's, it's rich. I mean, these applications are intense. So, council and City Clerk, I'm just checking in. Have we accomplished our task for this consideration item?
Yes.
Very well. Thank you, everyone. And that brings us to item, consideration item nine, or item nine, a consideration item discussing the local amendments to the 2025 edition of the California Building Standards Code, including options for electric vehicle readiness, load storage, water efficient landscaping, and bicycle parking requirements. We'll have a presentation and we'll provide final direction. And this direction will then lead and give staff what they need to put together and prepare the ordinance, which will then, if I'm correct, City Attorney be brought to us.
Yes.
For a first reading and a.
That's correct.
And then a second.
And then a second reading, yes.
So a few more items to come, but today, tonight's meeting is really important to make sure we have everything we want.
Well, we won't get everything.
Well, let me rephrase. Everything we feel is appropriate to include at this juncture. And I'm going to get a drink of water. I'll be right back. I'm listening.
Would you like one of these?
No, I want that. I think you can go.
Two years or less, I'm going to miss.
Two years, I'm gonna miss it.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer. Good evening, Vice Mayor Bowles, City Council. I'm Samantha Updegrave, Community Development Director, joined by Certified Building Official Greg McFann. And we're here to present tonight on the 2025 California Building Standard Code update following our initial study session last month. Oh, I need the clicker. So, tonight, we'll just do a very quick overview of the, what the update is, provide the information requested from council related to EV readiness, automatic load management systems, e-bike charging, and outdoor potable water use, and receive direction from council on preparation of the ordinance. So, the California Building Standard Codes are comprehensively addressed building safety, energy efficiency, and other factors, and they're standardized across the state. These have to be updated, they are updated every three years, and state law requires adoption by local agencies and also allows local amendments, local amendments that are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geologic, or topographical conditions. So, that's where we are. We need to adopt the 2025 Building Code along with our local amendments, that they're effective January 1st. So, just a reminder, local agencies can amend the CBC, I just said this, to make changes necessary for local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. And so, these are requirements that often exceed the California Building Code requirements. We did have changes in state law. Assembly Bill 130 was signed on June 30th as a budget trailer bill that became effective immediately and essentially placed a moratorium on new state and local building standards affecting residential units, unless specific findings can be made, and that applies for the next two code cycles. So, starting October 1st of this year through June 30th of 2031. For our local amendments, just to review council direction from our September study session, we will prepare an ordinance to readopt all of the local amendments, except removing the all-electric requirements for new construction in light of the Berkeley case and to remove provisions in our local ordinance where the state code is now more restrictive or matches our local amendments. And for future considerations, explore exceptions to the prohibition on changes for council to take up during goal setting. So, the additional considerations that council requested more information on have to do with electrical, electric vehicle charging and readiness, automatic load management, bicycle charging, and outdoor potable water use. So, council expressed interest in greater flexibility in the types of EV chargers for residential uses, specifically allowance for low-power Level 2 chargers that are permitted under the CBC. So, I think as most of us know, chargers range from Level 1, which is very slow and uses a standard 120-volt outlet, to Level 3 direct current, which is your fast-charging commercially-accessible chargers. So, Level 2 chargers are really used for daily use, you know, at home, workplace charging, most public stations. The, both the low-power and the standard Level 2 chargers both use a 240-volt or hard, outlet or hard-wired charger. The differences are the low-power uses a 20-amp circuit, charges about 3 to 5 miles per hour, so it would take about 12 hours to charge a battery, whereas the standard uses a 40-amp outlet, or sorry, a 40-amp circuit, charges at about 12 to 40 miles per hour, so about 6 hours for a full charge. So, the 2025 CBC requires one low-power Level 2 charger for all assigned EV spaces, and the Pacifica municipal code requires that 15% of our EV spaces have Level 2, when 85% are allowed to have the lower-power Level 2. So, the reduction to the percentage of the standard Level 2 chargers could reduce installation costs for developers and operational cost for users. So, the direction requested is, should the local amendment be modified to, or eliminate the percentage of standard Level 2 receptacles to allow more or all low-power Level 2? So, staff recommends either maintaining the current 15-85% split or reducing the standard Level 2 receptacles just down to maybe 5 to 10%, because the ability to modify or reinstate the current requirement will be limited for the next two code cycles under AB 130. I believe this was just an informational item, some questions about how the automatic load management systems work. So, these share one circuit or service among multiple charging points and then can distribute the power as needed. So, the wiring still has to be robust, so it still requires that 40-amp minimum to allow for future upgrades, or when at a maximum use, it's not overburdened. Chargers that are installed under the ALMS still have to support at least a 30-amp output, so it should be, it can handle both the low-power Level 2 and standard. And these are used to reduce peak load demand on the building service, which could potentially reduce the size of transformers, switchgear, and feeder capacity. It doesn't allow for undersizing the main service or distribution, so again, it still has to be robust. And the California Green Building Standard Code allows ALMS as an option for multifamily hotel and motel developments. So, again, no direction there, just wanted to provide that information that was requested. The next thing that council requested information about was the requirements for receptacles proximate to bicycle parking to allow for e-bike charging. There are currently no provisions in the 2025 CBC regarding bike charging or outlets at bike parking. So, you know, e-bikes use lithium-ion batteries, and there's been a lot of, there's been recent state legislation to try to address some of the storage and battery safety concerns that have passed in the past couple of years. So, some of those considerations are things like e-bike storage, charging locations, what, electrical supply, spacing, separation, temperature, fire safety. And so, the recent legislation has really addressed things like tenant and landlord rights around e-bike storage and certification of batteries to reduce fire hazards. So, due to the limitations on new reach codes affecting residential units imposed by, that should say, AB 130, these regulations could only apply to bike parking for non-residential uses and not for residential uses. So, the direction requested is, should a local amendment add requirements for receptacles for e-bike charging proximate to bicycle parking for non-residential projects? And, you know, because the CBC doesn't have standards at this time, I think it really needs more of a comprehensive analysis to know what the right fire safety measures are, kind of in all of those things I shared on the last slide. So, things like separation, temperature, battery safety. For outdoor potable water use, just to clarify, so state law requires agencies to adopt a local water-efficient landscaping ordinance, also known as Welo, or comply with the state model Welo. So, Pacifica adopted the state's model in January of 2010, and that's currently what applies. So, the California code requires residential developments to either comply with the local Welo or the current California's model Welo, whichever is more stringent. And Pacifica, in our 2022 Reach Code, added a local amendment that allows alternative compliance for smaller projects. So, projects with an aggregate landscape area less than 2,500 square feet can use Appendix D of the state's model Welo for prescriptive compliance. And so, that's still under the state's model, but has to be adopted by local ordinance, which we did. There were questions about whether this could limit other agencies' ability to regulate, like, water and landscaping, but the city can only enforce its own ordinances. And if other agencies have requirements, they would be the ones, excuse me, to enforce them. So, the direction is, should the local amendment that allows the prescriptive compliance pathway for smaller projects be removed from our local amendments? You know, removing flexibility for smaller projects could increase the cost of residential development, and it also doesn't impact the regulatory authority of other agencies. So, our next steps after tonight, staff will introduce a draft ordinance on November 10th with final adoption on November 24th, so that they can be effective by the January 1 date. And then here are just the questions, again, where staff is seeking direction. And that concludes my presentation, and Mr. McFann and I are both here for questions.
Councilmember Wright, you have a question or clarification?
Yes, I do. I have an electric car, and I have a hybrid car also. And I can tell you that the 40-amp option is really the only way to get a sufficient charge in a sufficient amount of time. And the more of that that we could require, even if that causes us to need to use a load management system for a higher percentage, I would be in favor of, in fact, I would be in favor of 100% 40-amp services. And if they need to downscale in order to address the service load, that they use a load management system to do so. Yeah, but I do have a question regarding that. Is, does the load management piece count towards the load calculation determining the size of the service?
Can you ask that again?
Does, if you're using a load management system, does that count in the load calculation when you're calculating the size of the service required for a particular property?
Yes, it does, yes.
Thank you. That was it for that question.
Vice Mayor?
Could you just clarify that? Because I thought I saw on the slides that you, it wouldn't let you reduce your load calculations. I thought that was part of the presentation.
I, that's what I saw too, which is where the question came from.
So, there seems to be a conflict.
Do we remember what slide it was? Oh, thank you.
So, it reduces the peak load demand? So, it, that, it makes, so it's still part of the calculation?
It's still part of the calculation, but because your peak demand is different, like the slide says here, the building services, transformers, switchgear, and feeding capacity can be lowered to be accommodated by it. But you still have the same, it's not, it's not a straightforward answer. It's, it gets fairly complex, and you, and a lot of times, you'll have an electrical engineer who's doing the calculations to make the determinations on this.
Right, like, I typically only charge between midnight and 7:00 a.m., so that it's at low-cost hours when you're not using a lot of other electrical stuff, so. I just wondered how that works with, with the calculation.
It's hard to give a straightforward answer on that, unfortunately, because it is, it's, it's so complex when you add in all the other issues in a building and how this would play into it and the number you have. But I mean, it does reduce the peak load demand, which can give you some benefits for less transformer size, switchgear, and feeder capacity. So, I mean, it does, it does lower some, it can lower some of the cost of the building.
But, but you do say here, you can't undersize the main service or distribution, so you're still having to count all your loads, right?
Yeah, the main service size would still be the same, but the, a lot of the big costs in a new building are size of transformers, switchgear, and feeder capacity. So, again, it's, it's not a straightforward, yes, this would help. It's, in general, if you're using the ALMS system, you can save costs in the construction of the building in some aspects. You're still having to provide, assuming that everybody turns everything on at once, you still have to be able to take that into account. But, again, a lot of these buildings are then, because of this using ALMS, you're having an electrical engineer come in and design the system.
Yeah, so these aren't typical for homes, they're, I mean, maybe they're.
No, right.
But in terms of where the calculations that fit in, it's really a much larger.
Right, this wouldn't be for a single-family home.
Right.
This would be for a multifamily project.
In the event of upgrading, how much is it gonna cost to upgrade from 20 to 40?
I, I don't think I could give you a cost on that. It's, it can be significant. I mean, again, because as you, as you increase your electric, each plug to a higher thing, then you're increasing switchgear, and then down the line is transformers. And transformers are really the big cost. If you have to upgrade a transformer for a project, you have a cost in time. A lot of utility, PG&E doesn't always have transformers available, and it can be, take quite a bit of time for them to order a larger one. And the cost of a transformer is gonna be huge, depending on how it is. So, incrementally, the cost isn't big, but if you start building on top of it, eventually, you're gonna get to where you're bumping up to bigger costs and significantly bigger costs that could affect the viability of a project.
Is that a possibility? Instead of having more 20, instead, we should have more 40? Because at the long run, it's gonna cost money to upgrade, so might as well just start with a kinda high level, because it will cost more money for people to charge longer, and maybe they're gonna be charging on the peak time, and it gonna cost more money to charge.
There are a lot of trade-offs, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, and you get the project built in.
Is it included in our current plan to wire for 40 always?
Yes.
Just the gauge of the wire?
Yes, it has to be wired for the 40, even if you don't put in the 40. It has to be, it's, there's a lot of in the code, EV-ready and solar-ready, so you don't, you don't necessarily have to put in the 40-amp now, but you have to be able to come back next year and, and just put in the new, the new plug and not have to upsize the wire.
And maybe change the breaker.
Right, yeah.
Could you go back to the slide where you were comparing the low-level charger and the Level 2 charger? And then, and then this doesn't include, right, the low-power Level 2? Could you, could you give us those numbers here also? Because that, that's the difference, right? We're looking at, our code now is 15% Level 2, which are the 40-amp, 6 hours, and then 85%, not low-power, but low-power 2, which is a good bit faster than low-power.
Oh, it's, I'm sorry, this is the, the top table does show low-power Level 2 versus the standard Level 2 chargers?
But I don't think the 3 to 5 miles per hour is right, because it, at least in the staff report, page 147, it talks about the low-power being 3 to 5 miles an hour, and a low-power Level 2 charging a whole battery in 12 hours. So, maybe it's the time, but where you wouldn't get a whole battery charge.
Yeah, I can check those numbers, sorry about that.
Okay, that's okay.
So, yes, so our, our current code requires 15% to just, to be the standard Level 2, and then the remaining 85% to be the low-power Level 2.
And by low-power, you. And by low-power, you mean still a 240-volt system, but at 20 amps?
Correct.
So, and then, in terms of the new codes for residential, so, I mean, are we, so this is our current code, and this is the current, the current CBC is much less, right? It's just low, low-power. So, we have this now. I mean, if we wanted to do what Councilmember Wright is suggesting, can we even do that with the, for residential projects? Because that's adding a burden.
My recollection from the study session was exploring the possibility of reducing the number of standard level-two chargers, so looking to make it more cost-effective by moving more toward the, the CBC, which only requires the low-power. And so, if you wanted to increase the percentage of the standard level-two, I will defer to Assistant City Attorney Bazano, but I believe we would need to have an exception under AB 130 to, to increase those requirements. But I believe the law would allow us the flexibility to decrease the requirement.
What my concern is, just to be clear, is that according to what we're looking at here on the screen now, you would not be able to get a sufficient charge during the cost-effective hours of the night, basically from midnight to 7:00 in the morning, to get to work and back to work if you worked in the city with this level of charge. And if we're trying to set up for the future and contemplate people being able to drive electric vehicles to work and get home, it might be a good idea to have that be part of our code.
I believe that the current allowance establishes some requirements for the, the standard level-two.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
And so, with regard to whether or not there would need to be a specific finding under AB 130, it sounds like there would be a change to the amendment that was in place in 2022. So, we'd need to look at whether or not that change is a substantial modification or not. Under the, the potential option that Director Updegrave mentioned, it might not be a substantial modification from what was in place in 2022. We'd just have to look at it. There might also be other exceptions that apply, but we'd need to make that determination once, once we understand what the proposed change would be.
And just, because I'm not clear right now, what, what is, what is in our code right now for the 2022 for chargers?
15% has to be standard level-two, and then the remainder, yeah, is for the low-power.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
And then, the other option, of course, as, as discussed earlier in the presentation, is that the, the change applies to non-residential, and then we wouldn't have to make a finding under AB 130.
Okay. I don't have any cards, so I'd like to open public comment on this item. If anyone would like to speak, please. If you don't have a card filled out, you can do one later. And Mr. Michael Wallman is approaching the podium. Please go ahead.
Yes, hi. So, in my house, I have a 60-amp circuit breaker for my one Tesla car charger. I'm adding a second Tesla car charger. It will use the energy management system, and then it can't overwhelm the house. I have only 100-amp circuit, two 60-amp breakers, one in the main, one in the sub, and they will talk to each other along with the house load and lower. So, if you go and put in an ordinance for 40-amp circuits, it's probably under what you would need. And then, you have to be mindful of, let's say, you have five of these chargers, they're going to share that 60-amp circuit and lower the per-charger number, depending on how many cars are plugged in. Now, as far as a transformer is concerned, like, at my workplace, we're putting in a transformer to remove car chargers from our UPS system, because that makes no sense to hold the load for cars when a generator will kick in, in seconds, and hold, and continue charging them once the generator turns on. So, that transformer can then support 10 car chargers. Because it uses the energy management system, you could then have two circuits, one 60-amp, the other 60-amp on a single transformer, and depending on the demand of how many cars are plugged in, it will do the same. It'll lower those five chargers if all five are in use, to split that 60-amp load across them. So, you're going to see, depending on how many cars are plugged in, that decrease of amperage, and then increase in time of how long it'll take to charge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Assistant City Attorney, is there anyone on the phone?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, we'll close public comment, then. Bring it back. So, we have before us some questions for council direction. Do you feel council members that understand the specifics of what we just were discussing very well, do you feel that we have covered the point?
No.
Okay, then let's keep talking about it.
I still would like to see much more of the high-powered charging.
They're asking us to eliminate it and then have more lower power.
Myra?
Oh, yeah. They're asking to eliminate the percentage of standard level and, and allow more lower level.
I would go the other way.
I think we have to know what we can add to, and so, if we want to raise it, we're going to need the city attorney to do that analysis, right? So, I mean, I, I don't want to lower it any more than what we have now if, so, understanding from staff that right now our ordinances call for 15% level-two and 85%, not low-power, but low-power level-two, which still lets you charge a car fully overnight. I mean, I'm okay with that. If we can raise those numbers a little bit, I'm okay, but I, I wouldn't make it 100%, because it, it really does add a huge expense to.
But that's where you can get the load management system to kick in, which will...
But you still, but you still have to fully have a panel for that load, so it's, it is limiting people.
I'm not totally convinced of that.
Well, that's what we heard from our consultant, so. I, I guess I'm, I was surprised that we have 85% low-power level-two now, because I'd never even heard of low-power level-two until our last meeting. Is, is that really what our ordinance says, and not just low-power? Because I don't want 85% low-power.
It, it is. I was also surprised as well when, when I looked. I was like, hey, there's something in here about this already.
And this is for, this is not for single-family homes, is that right? Or this is for new construction?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's for new construction, multifamily. It wouldn't apply to a single-family home. You're not required to put a car charger in a single-family home.
What I'm most encouraged about is the wire will be there.
You are required for new homes.
Or is it EV-ready?
I think with the new code, it's... What, what does the new code require for new homes?
For new, single-family and duplex?
Yeah.
I need to, look, I'm so sorry, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I do think there is something either in the planning code or the building code.
I know that the state building codes have upped all those requirements in general, but.
Greg?
Christine, just, just for the sake of argument, let's suppose it's a multifamily. Let's suppose it's a 70-amp circuit per household. You have, at night, when you're going to be charging your car, you have amperage there that you can utilize, because most people aren't baking at night. For example, they're not running their espresso machine after midnight, between 7:00 in the morning. So, in terms of the argument of it increasing the load that you're going to need, I, I don't totally buy into that.
But I think by code, you have to build to the whole load, is, is what he was just saying.
Not with the load management system.
The, the problem is, it's a lot of infrastructure money. So, this, this is where it's, it's going to make it difficult to build all this housing that we need to build, because these are really expensive things to bring the power level up that much for each unit. Right, I, I mean, the, the wonderful thing about the code is that now it requires them for each unit, right? So, there are some changes, and...
And they're pre-wiring, and I'm thrilled about that.
Yeah, yeah. And pre-wiring to 40-amp, so it can be changed out later, too, right?
I, I, we, we agree on that. I just want to advocate for as much as we can get, the day of electric-only cars is coming, and I don't want our community to get caught short.
However, if it costs too much, then we don't get housing. We need to make it easy for the investors to...
I would have totally been on your bandwagon until I heard from PCE, and they're actually recommending, like, the level-one in every housing, just to try to...
I can't even charge my hybrid.
I agree. I don't like the level-one. I had level-one for three months, and I immediately paid the extra $700 to upgrade it to level-two.
Yeah, so, I don't want peak tenants to do that just to be able to get to work.
Yeah, but, but with this, but they can charge overnight on a level, low-power level-two. It's not six-hours, it's a little longer, but they can.
Yeah, and I can clarify, so the zoning ordinance requires one EV parking space for every one to nine parking spaces provided, and then it, it, you know, will go up. And the building code requires a single-family and duplex to be EV-ready, for the spaces to be EV-ready.
And could someone please clarify what I think I heard about, these won't be amended for two cycles or something like that?
Say that again.
These codes?
Right, so, under, under AB 130, that's the length of the moratorium on, on, on changes, unless one of the exceptions is met. So, if we do, and again, you know, my, my understanding from our study session was that council wanted to look at potentially reducing it, and so I'm hearing something a little different tonight. It's just why staff was like, we don't recommend changing it at this point, because you can't change it back in the, the next two cycles. But again, like Assistant, Assistant City Attorney Bazano said, we'd have to see if, if raising that threshold for the standard level-two spaces would meet one of those exceptions, or not be a substantial modification.
Just to add, or clarify, that the, the building code, the stand, building standards are updated every three years.
Yeah.
So, AB 130 will be around for two more cycles, but the building standards are updated every three years, so we'll be back again in three years.
I see.
So, so I know you're hoping to get final direction from us tonight, but it sounds like there might be something possible, whether it's making them all level-two or, or a greater percentage. I mean, is that something that you can, when you bring it back to us as a draft, that we can have an option and easily pick from that? Or does that delay it, meaning that we would have to have one more meeting?
Yeah, that would be fine. I mean, I think we could, we could do that.
We just hold off on that decision until we hear from the city attorney of what's possible?
I would appreciate that. The more we can do to be ready for what's coming, I'm in favor of. I'm also okay with sitting here by myself, having you guys go a different direction.
I think we're relying on the goal.
I'm just listening.
And so, may I just get clarification? I just want to make sure I, I have it correct. So, the direction would be if we can increase the requirement for the standard level-two above the current 15%? Is that correct? And was there a...
And that's 15% for only one of every nine parking spots, correct?
That, that applies to the number of required EV spaces. So, if your project requires 10 EV spaces, it would be 15% of those would be the standard level-two. So, it's looking at the number of EV spaces provided.
So, it'd be one and a half high-powered chargers for 100 parking spots.
And, and again, just to confirm what I'm hearing from our building consultant, so would every EV space need to have a 40-amp wire to it?
Yes.
Per the building code? So, so even if...
Yeah, it'd have to have the capacity to go up to the...
Okay, so, so even if we didn't require it at all, it's something that an individual person could upgrade. And like I said, it cost me $700 to upgrade the outlet, because I already had the capacity.
But keep in mind, that's for one out of every nine parking spots.
Oh, I understand.
And we're heading for 100% electric, and we're just so sore changing ourselves.
We'll see what's possible.
Well, and also, there needs to be equity in our, you know, multifamily.
Yeah. Yes, definitely. So, even in those constructions to come, affordable housing, for example, we want to make sure that we have equitable availability. One thing I'm wondering, since I can't get into the fray on the 40 versus the 20 versus the transformer, I'm just leave that all to you, but I do want to know, is, in structuring this from a planning code and building code, is there any opportunity to structure it as an incentive type of, assuming AB 130 allows us to? Can we say, well, if you put in the thing Greg wants, it's, you can do some, get some consideration over here, you know, in some, you know what I'm talking about? Like, is there a way for us to build incentives into our codes, or into the ways in which we do our approvals, that would lead builders and developers to do what we want without absolutely mandating it in our code?
Some energy bargaining.
Yeah, you know, carrots, not sticks.
I really like that. I don't know what it would be, but...
Me either.
That is possible to, I mean, it's possible to construct a code to use an incentive. We would need to do additional research, again, just as you're saying, you know, what are those incentives? And then, we would need to also evaluate it under AB 130.
Right, that's the main thing.
Like, if we did them 100% with a control to limit the amperage at night, that would give equal service to everyone parking in an electric stall at the time when people have the lowest draw. So, I think you get what I'm saying.
No, I get, I get what you're saying. It's, I'm just still worried about the upfront cost, right? But, and, I mean, I wish I knew...
That's a valid concern.
I wish I knew what that cost was, right? Times 100 units in a building or whatever, right? Is that, does that start to mean that it's become, it's just so hard to build anything right now, right?
Right. And the, the cost of not doing it, though, particularly as who said, the lower echelon people, it may price them out of the electric car market.
Well, I'd love to, like, say that we want these level-twos in our affordable units, right, for our affordable units. If we could, if we could do that, too, that would be great.
Okay, another question for not knowledgeable on these topics person here, sitting here. Is this the kind of thing, like, all the technology that goes into my library, that over time, it becomes more powerful and less costly? Or is this the kind of thing, oh, no, it's pretty much a straight-line cost? Now, I know you were mentioning about transformers, that's a big thing, that's out of our control, sort of, I mean, when it's, when you require one, in other words, that's a whole PG&E, get in line, tell them practically before you submit your plans that you need it, but for purposes of what the builders and developers need to plan for and purchase to do these builds, is this the type of thing that gets a little cheaper over time?
Well, it does. Electric cars have come down in price a lot since, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
So, in that sense, what I'm thinking is perhaps that can be an offset to what, because you're saying, if we build it today, this is really, really, it's already so costly to build, and now we're adding on.
Oh, well, I think, I mean, I don't know, the, the electrical costs are actually going to be increasing, right? The, the car efficiencies and how fast they charge and is going to increase, so they'll hopefully take less time and hold, hold a longer charge.
Got it.
Right. So, anyway, I think we need to hear from the city attorney. I'm happy to consider some, some stricter, you know, higher...
I'm happy to consider some, some stricter, you know, higher numbers if, if we can.
I just thought of an alternative, too.
Okay, go.
So after the city attorney speaks.
No, she has to do research.
I think, yeah, I think that's what.
In terms of bringing back alternative A, alternative B, so that when we look at this again on November 10th, we can make, choose.
And my clarification question was if there was a percentage for the standard Level 2 that you wanted to consider? Right now, it's 15.
Another thing that might be an option would be to have each dedicated per-unit parking spot pre-wired and let the tenants install their own charging system.
Well, that's what he was just, just, well, I, I guess it's not every, adding, adding requirements for every unit would, for residential would be something we probably can't add under AB 130, would be my guess right now. But, but for every EV spot that we can require, it has a 40.
It's just one out of nine, and then I would be very much in favor of the vast chargers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you know what you need?
So I think, I don't know if Director Updgrave's question was answered or clarified.
Fifty-fifty.
Oh, right.
Sure. So, I mean, in keeping in mind that one of the exceptions is that it be, that it's not a substantial modification from what was in place, so.
Yeah. Do you tell us how many we can get? How about that?
You know, I mean.
Some allowable.
Couple percentage points, I think we can say is not a substantial modification, but if you're talking like increasing it a significant amount.
Threefold? No, Greg.
Then that becomes problematic.
I'm going to ask, and people.
There are other exceptions that we'll look at certainly, but that's the one that I sort of have in mind.
Right, right, okay. You'll let us know the maximum recommended.
What?
Percentage change.
There's no direction on that, then, from the council?
You're just, you're saying, "Don't make it too big."
Right, so if you.
And I'm saying, "What's not too big?"
Yeah.
Like I said, a couple percentage points, maybe.
So going from 15 to 20, or are we going down?
No, up.
No.
We're going up.
We're going up. How about 15 to 25? Do I hear 15 to 25?
It can be negotiable, too.
Going twice, sold.
25, we think we can do? Yeah, I'm.
I think we can ask and get told no. I don't mind getting told no.
Yeah, I mean, we can always reach out and see if the state Building Standards Commission staff will give us some guidance.
Uh-huh, because you do have to submit it to them, and they have to approve these reach codes, too, so.
Over the percentage of all parking spaces, it's really a very small number, because it's only one out of nine, and it's only.
Yeah.
An additional 10%.
I understand.
Okay. Oh, they're confirmed. What do you all think about the e-bikes? I, I, I think what we heard is, is that we can't, we shouldn't, can't and shouldn't do very much because of the dangers of the batteries and fire separations and things like that. I mean, I know, I know my son, who has an apartment, who has an e-bike, like, doesn't want to leave it somewhere, also because it's such an expensive piece of equipment, so he just carries it up to his apartment, you know? Yeah.
And where, where would you rather have it? In a fire-separated garage, or would you rather have it burning in an apartment?
It's charging in your unit, anyway. Yeah, I don't know. Have any, have any other cities in the county considered?
I believe Oakland has been, has, I don't know if they've adopted anything or had been exploring it. But there wasn't a lot of information about what, like, what standards could apply that would kind, that would hit all of those, all of those goals. I do know from conversations with other developers that I worked on in another city, they were specifically designing bike storage rooms with fire safety. They were adding things to their leases about e-bike charging, storage of e-bikes in units, those types of things. So I think some of the, I think there's some movement within the, you know, the private sector looking at these things, and, and possibly some other cities looking at how to address it.
And they're not a big load, is that correct?
It's not a big load, no.
So it's like a 12-2 wire, it's not a big deal?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty low. I mean, it's a standard plug outlet, yeah.
I think the, the batteries are the, the issue, like the overcharging, leaving plugged in, not having certified batteries, like, those are the, the things that are causing issues.
So we could regulate it with a timer switch, by putting that in the code?
I think this is all getting too complicated for, you know, little changes to, to reach codes. I don't know, for, for right now.
Should we say at the very least, "Pre-wire," then?
Do we require, like, what do we require for bicycle storage in a multi-unit building? Is it a separate room or outdoor? I mean, what, you know?
I believe they have a menu of options that they can meet. So I think it depends on the number of units, the type of development, in terms of where, what the storage would look like. Trying to pull it.
And a reminder that this is, we're recommending it for non-residential projects, so. It would be businesses, business parks, that type of thing.
It could be a feature, not a bad thing.
So the, the, the standards for where bike parking is located is in the zoning ordinance, and there's typically three types. So just a rack that secures the frame and wheels, enclosed bike locker, or a fence-covered, locked, or guarded bicycle storage area. So that, that's the extent of regulations that we have for residential and multifamily.
Could we just require some electrical outlets in bike storage areas and, and then leave it up to the landlord to decide if they're safe and what the regulations are?
I think so, because we need to have things ready, right? It's only fair. And I, I think our staff housing up at Jefferson Union High School District, they have locker, they have like storage lockers with charging. But I don't know, I, I'd like to take a look, but we're not talking about residential.
Right.
So, I mean, we got to be able to ride our, our bikes wherever and charge them. So I think whatever we can do.
And on, on the coast, especially multimodal, as we've been talking about all the time.
Yes.
Greg, about, you know, right? So.
Well, as you can see, I'm a little crazy about this stuff.
Yeah, I got that.
Smart.
So can, can we require outlets in commercial, not in residential? In bike charging areas?
Through the building code? I, I defer to our.
Sorry.
Requiring outlets for locations where bikes are stored in commercial.
Nothing currently.
I'm sorry?
The, the current code doesn't require it.
Right, but the, the question is, can we require it now through an amendment?
I would, I would think of under AB 130 for residential, no, but for commercial, sure.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, commercial.
Yeah, without doubt.
And just another thing to consider is that they're not required to provide weather-protected bicycle parking.
Right, but you, but you can have a GFI outlet, so it's still an, an outlet on the exterior somewhere that can just.
So, yeah.
To specifically answer this question, it would be yes.
The e-bike charging question.
Okay, so, and that's for all, so even if it's a, like, a bicycle rack? So this is also for non-weather, for any bicycle parking? Including non-covered, non-weather protected?
It should have to be covered, would be the way I would look at it.
I'm okay with that.
But your recommendation was not to change it, right? Was the staff recommendation no to this question?
It, it was just because it, we don't have, we don't have requirements for like indoor bicycle parking facilities.
Yet.
Yet. And so it may be something considered more comprehensively, but like the zoning standards for bicycle parking are pretty minimal, and just that they have to be, you know, located adjacent to onsite bike circulation and pedestrian routes. You know, and again, these aren't, these aren't required to be covered or weather-protected, which I think can make requirements for electrical service challenging or tricky, particularly with racks.
There is, I guess, another possibility. It's if there is outdoor space in residential units, maybe we can require it for residential units, but in the future, we can reply, require a plug on the outside, on an outside deck where people can carry their bike up to their apartment, lock it to the railing on their deck, and charge their electric bike.
Nice.
Can, can we just say if, if, if commercial is providing indoor bike storage, that they provide a certain number of.
I'm good with that.
The if part?
Yeah.
For now.
And the, and then for clarification, what would be that number? Or would it just follow? Does a building code have a requirement for electrical outlets based on, like, linear feet? Or how's that?
Well, in residential, yes, but in a commercial space, it's, it's pretty open. You're not required to have.
Maybe it's a percentage of the number of bikes that are required or something? I don't know.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Maybe as a percentage of the number of bikes that are required, like, half of them, or?
I'm good with that. Anything is better than nothing.
Exactly, yeah. And one outlet can actually happen.
The more we support it, the more our community supports it, the more people will.
Do it.
Do it, and be multimodal instead of driving their car.
Mm-hmm.
And what is the percentage? What percentage of?
50%.
Great. Okay. Next.
And then about the irrigation thing, you ready for that yet?
I, sorry, if I may, I do worry that 50%. So if you have 10 bikes, that might be 10 feet?
Yeah, that's a lot.
Like 10 or 12 feet? Like, five outlets would be a lot to have within that space.
What do you think would be more reasonable?
Probably more like 10, 15%. I would think more like 10 to 15% would be more reasonable, just from the, the infrastructure, putting the plugs in and the proper spacing and keeping the, them apart. But I mean.
Okay.
It's, it can be do, we can, we can make it work for whatever you want to do it. It's just, that's.
Can it be arranged?
And I just ask any of my council members, when was the last time you saw a kid riding a non-electric bike? Seriously.
This morning. I haven't seen a kid riding a non-electric bike ever, even the teeniest bike.
They all ride electric bikes.
They do.
Every single one of them. So I would go for whatever the max is that you think we can get.
25%?
And here and there telling us 50% is your.
I mean, outlets are not that expensive if you're building a whole building, so.
Yeah, especially since you can daisy-chain them for that, because the load isn't that big. And so that'll be only still one circuit, so you're fine. 50%.
Oh, it's too high. Yeah, let's do whatever is, is recommended by the expert.
Oh, she's against us.
How about in between? How about 25 as a, an in-between compromise?
Thank you, 25%.
Okay, 25%.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, great.
All right, we low. So my, my only question, I was, I was okay with this before. I was trying to find a way for the water district to have stricter rules, but I understand your reasoning about that. So, so the prescriptive for smaller projects, I forget what the square foot, it was 2,500 square feet of landscaping. So that's, but, so that, like, most single-family houses, right? You wouldn't have to do, you don't have to do wheelofer unless those are much bigger generally.
5,000-foot lot, 50% lot coverage, you're at 25.
Well, I guess I planted a native plant, so it didn't need irrigation, but. But I, I guess that the part that I'm confused is I usually think of reach codes being more restrictive, and so ours is actually less restrictive.
I don't know that it's necessarily less restrictive. It's just that the model state ordinance offers different appendices that still establish standardized requirements. And so then we're able to adopt those, and that's within, that's within the state law and the state's ordinance. So I, I think it's not necessarily that it is a reduced requirement. It just offers a different compliance pathway for, for smaller projects that still meets the state law.
Yeah, so I'm okay with that as it is.
Well, I, I do have one question. Is it required if they're, if purple pipe is available, that they use purple pipe for irrigation?
I, I would, I don't know. I would have to research that.
I don't think it is.
I would love for that to be a rule.
I would love for it to be available.
Yeah.
You'd be surprised how big the map is in Pacifica, how much purple pipe there is already.
Ooh, let's see the maps.
The golf, the golf course and.
Only four holes.
High school.
Yes.
Only four holes, really? Only four holes. Okay, I want to see those maps. That's true. Okay, so what's the decision? We low.
Keep it as is.
Yeah. Gregory?
I will go with the majority on that, but I still want my purple pipe rule. But I'm not going to get it, and that's okay.
This time around. I think it needs a lot more analysis and a presentation.
More study needed.
I agree, but I'm still going to throw it out there, we're going to get the chance.
Go for it. Okay. Anything further, Samantha, for Director Updgrave that you need? Is there like another page of council direction?
That was everything.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience with me.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll be, like I said, we'll be bringing this back November 10th and November 24th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, council members. That concludes the business consideration items before the council tonight.
Do we have one more?
Oh, nope, whoops, we have one more. I thought I circled number 10, that meant we were done with number 10.
No.
Nope, we're done with number nine. Okay, now we're going on to item 10.
Actually, can I have five minutes?
Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to go on to item 10. It is 9:03 PM.
Isn't it nice starting meetings at 6:00? That we actually are going to get out of here at a decent.
We get two bathroom breaks.
Recording stopped.
And we are on item ten. Amendments to mayor and vice mayor selection process. Adopt the resolution, this is the proposed action, adopt the resolution of the city council, the city Pacifica rescinding administrative policy, number seventeen. Selection of mayor and mayor pro tem and amending the city council rules and code of ethics to add guidelines for selection of mayor and vice mayor. And Sarah Coffey will give us a staff report.
Mayor and council members, this item to adopt the proposed resolution to rescind administrative policy number seventeen, the selection of mayor and mayor pro tem policy and amend those council rules and code of ethics to add guidelines for the selection of mayor and vice mayor follows from the council's direction at the last regular meeting on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, in which council discussed the, the recommendations and options presented by the ad hoc subcommittee consisting of council members Beer and Espinoza. The council's direction at the last meeting is incorporated into a new section nine in the council rules and code of ethics. And I will give a brief overview of what the council settled on for the direction for the policy for the selection of mayor and vice mayor. The selection of mayor and vice mayor occurs annually at either the first regular meeting in December or a special meeting in December. In the years where there is an election of city council, then the selection of mayor and vice mayor occurs as soon as practical after the election results are certified. The council discussed eligibility criteria for the mayor and vice mayor. The eligibility criteria for the mayor position is that the candidate or the candidate under consideration for mayor has served as vice mayor for at least eleven months in the preceding year. For consideration of selection of vice mayor, the council member must have served at least eleven months on city council and they should not be serving in the final year of their second full term on city council. If a council member has declined a nomination for mayor or vice mayor in the immediately preceding year, then they cannot be considered for the nomination for that role in the second year following the declination. If a council member defers the nomination for mayor or vice mayor in the immediately preceding year, then they may be considered for that nomination for the appointment in the subsequent year. And no, no reason needs to be stated for deferring or declining. The currently seated mayor will be the presiding chair for the process for the selection of mayor. And then the newly seated mayor will become the presiding chair for the selection of the vice mayor. In, in an election year, the, following the oath of office for the newly elected council members and the seating on the dais, that will be when the new council will be considering the selection of the mayor and the vice mayor. For the selection process for mayor and vice mayor, the city clerk will review the eligibility criteria for the mayor and vice mayor and will inform the eligible council members of their eligibility prior to the release of the agenda packet, which will show which council members are eligible for each mayor and vice mayor role. The, of the eligible council members, they will, under consideration, they will state whether they are interested in that nomination or if they choose to defer or decline the nomination. Prior to any vote on mayor or vice mayor, the city council shall allow, allow public comment and deliberate on the appointment of the mayor or vice mayor and then vote on the selection of mayor and vice mayor by a majority vote of the council members. An eligible city council member may decline the nomination for any reason and must make a statement on the dais declining the nomination. If there's no requirement to make, to state a reason for declining, once a council member declines the nomination for mayor or vice mayor, it cannot be rescinded and the member cannot be considered for nomination in the immediately following year. A council member may defer nomination for mayor or vice mayor if they're eligible. There's no requirement for them to state a reason for deferring. If they defer the nomination, then they may be considered the fall, the immediately following year for that role. And they may not defer two years in a row. If there's an occasion for a vacant, the role of mayor or vice mayor becoming vacant, then the, a process may be held outside of the annual process to select a new mayor or vice mayor. And to deviate from the policy, a supermajority vote of those council members present would be required. So that's an overview of the mayor selection criteria and vice mayor selection criteria and process that was discussed at the October thirteenth meeting and incorporated into the amended council rules and code of ethics that is attached to the resolution proposed tonight. I can answer any questions.
Are there any clarifying questions from council? I don't see any. I'm checking lights, I don't see any lights. Is there any public, I would like to open public comment on this item.
There's a hand being raised in the back while he's filling out.
Oh, I see, okay, very good. Mr. Wallman will be coming to the podium in a minute.
Hi, great to
Hello.
See you all as always.
Welcome.
And, you know, continue the conversation. I wish there was more people in the room. Yeah, in regards to the concern about not having a vice mayor run in their second term for the last year, that certainly makes a lot of sense. My concern would be about having a vice mayor run even in the last year of their first term because there's no certainty that that individual would be elected again. So now you have a situation where you have a vice mayor that would have became mayor at the first year of their second term, but now you don't have that person. So what do you fall back on in such a scenario? I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense to change the terminology from mayor pro tem to vice mayor. I think a lot more of us can understand that. I think it is good to have general guidelines about expectations to avoid unnecessary conflict and set understanding of what the, what the Pacifica community can expect in the nomination and elector, election process of mayor and vice mayor. And then just to kind of echo what I mentioned in the previous conversation on this topic, I'd really like to see the consideration of adding two at-large board members. I think this would provide a lot more ability for the community to step up and take on roles. I think you'll find that there's more than enough people in the city that would be entrusted in running for such a position. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Assistant city clerk, do you have a name?
There is one raised hand, it is for Clifford Lawrence.
Okay. Please go ahead, Cliff.
Hello.
Hello.
Cliff Lawrence here. Looking at this agenda item, I have one major concern. The necessary qualification that the new mayor have had eleven year, eleven months experience. I'm concerned that this is a mechanism to deny Christine Bowles the mayor position of next year. And I hope we can get clarification that that is not the case. Thank you.
You understand?
Yeah, I didn't before, but I do now, okay.
Okay, are there any other hands?
There are no other hands.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back. Is there a point of clarification?
I think, I think what he's getting to, and I hadn't even noticed that at all, is that there's a requirement that the vice mayor serve for eleven months before they can be mayor.
Oh, because we had a delay. Okay, do we need a supermajority vote? Oh no, we haven't adopted this yet. To deviate from the rules?
Wait, what?
Because when Christine was named vice mayor at the time mayor pro tem, she will not have the, because of when it occurred, she will not be able to complete eleven months in that role, which is the stated qualification.
It says in that role? It's served eleven months.
To be nominated for mayor. But it is for the, for the vice mayor.
It's for vice mayor.
Not for the mayor.
The vice mayor will, will be the ma, will.
Yeah, vice mayor will be the mayor, no question.
No, 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 it says, the city council, this is on page one fifty-one, and I've heard the pages have changed, so I don't know if that's the current page. But it's at the top.
So it's the third sentence down.
Yeah, it says the city council directed that the eligibility criteria for mayor would be having served at least eleven months as vice mayor in the preceding year.
We didn't put that in there.
Can we just scratch the eleven months and make it served as vice mayor?
Yes, yes. That doesn't make sense.
This is before the council and the council can amend it as they see fit.
Yes.
Okay, so, but where does it say it in the proposed resolution or rules? In the proposed? Not that, the thing Christine just referred to was the recitation of, and the summary of what we discussed. I believe it's important to, to clear, clean it up there.
I think it's in section nine, so page, starting on page one hundred and seventy-two.
One seventy-four look like your one seventy-two.
I have no idea.
One seventy.
It's, it's section nine subsection two, eligibility criteria for mayor and vice mayor.
Yes, that's, that's it, which is on my packet, page one seventy-two.
Mine's on my page one seventy-four. One seventy.
She sent a new agenda.
Greg's also. Starts on one seventy-four, mine starts on one seventy-two.
Okay, there you go.
But anyway, can we cross out eleven months?
Okay, and that's in paragraph two, did you say? Last page for the people who didn't get the new one is one fifty-one.
So the amendment would read.
Have served as vice mayor.
So the amendment would re, would read, a member of the city council will be eligible to be considered for mayor if they have served as a vice mayor in the preceding year.
So strike for at least eleven months, strike that.
And that's in section nine dash. It's repeated twice.
Mayor is eligible to be considered next year.
Yeah.
Oh. Dun dun dun. Did you hear that, Cliff?
We should make a meme or something, you know?
I love seeing the councils laughing. Unless their initials are, no. Well.
And I do think, so we did get an email.
Oh, yes.
If you saw the, the public comment.
I did.
Because that community member wasn't able to like watch the last meeting or read the agenda items. But they were still confused of why we, we didn't include district rotations and they didn't understand, there was another thing about, there was one other thing. But anyway, I think it's important for the community to understand how hard we worked to try to include district rotations. We really did, we tried every variable we possibly could and we just couldn't get there.
It doesn't work.
It doesn't work.
Well, I, I think it doesn't work as a strict rotation. I, I was wondering after reading that email too. I mean, it, if we, it's not a policy, but if we could have, like, it is the council's intention to rotate this position between us, and it's not like a hard, fast rule. But it's, but, but it's, you know, I mean, we do want to give everybody a turn and, you know, have, have representation by the different districts as it works out, right? But, but yeah, I agree with you.
And unfortunately, the term is four years and there's five of us, so.
But there are cycles with elections, right? And.
No, totally.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, it's not always going to work out, but. Anyway, it might be nice to have an intention in here is what, is what I was thinking as, as an addition.
It would be a good idea to just maybe after two terms to take a break and then maybe come back.
Oh, that's a whole nother conversation.
We're not tackling that.
Right. Get ready to have an ordinance, an initiative, yeah. So, city attorney, what would your thought be about stating an intention in the council rules? That's not a hard and fast rule? With something to do with striving for opportunity to be shared or something to that effect? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's something the council can certainly do with the understanding that that's not a binding document, there's no enforcement of it. It's just the, you know, the council expressing their desires in the council rules and code of ethics. So if that's the desire of the council, you could, you could even insert it as, you know, an. a...
Caveat.
Part of Section 9 and just as a sentence or two at the outset of Section 9.
I like that. I don't know what we wanted to say, but I like it.
You could say something like, "While the council desires to establish rules and procedures for the selection of Mayor and Vice Mayor that can be followed succinctly, comma, the council also desires to express interest in having a selection of Mayor and Vice Mayor that potentially rotates throughout the various districts," or rotates frequently or something to that effect.
Christine, can you think of other words?
I'm not so good at thinking of words on my feet.
Sorry. It's okay, you don't have to.
But yeah, the council has a desire for, you know, equity and fairness among colleagues, among districts.
I love that.
I like that emphasis on that.
That's so nice and simple.
I think my concern is, and I understand the comment, I hear the comment, and I understand where, you know, where it comes from and thoughtful consideration. I think what I am always urging us to remember is that we represent the whole city, and I don't want us to get too caught up in that this district, this district, this district sense, and yet, that's my statement for me, and I think it's important to have that kind of viewpoint when you sit up here. What I remember hearing was that there was an interest in, expressed by members of the public. It meant something to the public.
Yeah, and I think it still does, yeah. I like that, though, the equity and, it was so nice, I should have wrote it down.
It's on the record.
Gregory?
Uh-oh.
As the sole representative of a certain equity category, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes. I understand why it is that we're talking about all this stuff. I am a little bit afraid that it is too prescriptive in terms of what it is that we're doing, and I think that we're avoiding, because of our displeasure with the unpleasant process that we went through, that we don't want to do that again. And we're so afraid of that that I think we're going too far. I think the pendulum has swung too far. I think we're put up here because people trust us to make the hard decisions, and I think it's okay to make the hard decisions. And I just, I think we've gone too far, and that would be...
Can you tell me which part you think went too far? Because I feel like we pared it down a lot from what we originally presented.
If it was me, I would have done something much simpler from the start. I think where we went off the rails was there wasn't enough opportunity for discussion, there wasn't enough opportunity for a second person to be nominated or a third person to be nominated, and that's where I think we made our mistake and where our hurt feelings came from. I don't think that forcing future councils into some kind of predetermined model and then making it extremely hard to alter that is necessarily what's in the best interest of Pacifica. But I understand why it is you guys feel the way you do, and I support you in your feelings. I just don't think I can vote with you.
There is flexibility because if, if you're not ready to go, you have the opportunity to express, like, the two, like, two elections, one is two and the other one is three, so you have the opportunity to tell the city clerk that you want to be considered. So you have flexibility.
And multiple people can be considered under these new rules. So I think, I think that's done what you're saying.
I see it as a little bit more prescriptive, but it's okay for us to disagree.
Well, I don't know, but maybe we can point to where you think it is, because I think that's the opposite, actually. This leaves open.
It's still open.
I'm actually concerned the other way. I was still trying to look at the, and maybe Mary and Myra can explain to me, but the difference between, ah, sorry, my brain has just gone through a little thing, but the difference between declining and deferring and how that plays out, like, I'm just putting myself in those shoes, like, just as an example, because it's easier if you're thinking about a particular case. So assuming I'm Mayor next year and assuming I get reelected, so two assumptions, neither of them are certain. So according to the rules, I'd be eligible to be Vice Mayor again that next year, right after being reelected. But, yeah?
No, because you already been...
No, we took that out the last time.
Oh, did we?
We did.
No, because you...
The two or three-year in-between service we took out.
Oh, we did that?
So that, go on.
Yeah. Finish your point.
So that means, like, if Sarah is identifying everyone who's eligible, I would be in that pool of eligible. I wouldn't want to do it, I wouldn't want to let somebody else do it. Do I defer or do I decline? And, you know, I'm only allowed two deferrals, but I might want to defer three years, right? It's just, it's just a little weird.
There is a lot of changes on this, on the final document that I feel like we stated clearly, but then there's things that has been changed. On that respect, if you already serve as a Mayor, you would not be considered, only the two candidates that are coming in the event that she got reelected, District 3 and 5 are going to be the next on the rotation. That's what...
But we don't have a rotation.
No, we don't. So what do we have? Eligibility.
3 and 5 would be eligible.
3 and 5 would be eligible.
Under these rules, I'd still be eligible. There'd be new council members.
It's 3 and 5.
Sorry.
So this is what happened for six months.
1 and 4 would be eligible, 3 and 5 would not be eligible because it's a new election. They wouldn't have served 11 months in the first year, right?
Well...
Go ahead.
We've actually had this experience on this council, on this dais. I think Tiger nominated you.
And I deferred.
For Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
And...
And, go ahead, sorry.
And so she had already served and deferred because she, well, you can speak to it.
Because, because it was, there was strategy behind the deferment. It's because you were serving on the regional...
I remember you said that, yeah.
What is it, what was it called?
Coastal Cities.
Coastal Cities Group, yes, and we were doing the LCLUP. So there was strategy behind the deferment, and then there wasn't clarity for any of us about what that meant for my decision to defer. I'm super over it now, by the way, and that's fine, but it was, it really did cause a lot of problems for us because we weren't, nobody knew what I was thinking, and I thought everybody knew, and the community went nuts. And so I think this makes it clearer, at least with the deferment and the decline. Declining is straight up, I don't want to. Deferment is, I'm going to defer for a year because blah, 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 even though it says we don't have to say why. But I do think it's different. Declining is just straight up, I'm not interested.
Yeah. And so what was your thought, Christine? Because you were, when you opened this, you said you were looking at declining, deferring.
Like, yeah, so I would have to either decline or defer if my name was in the hat, right? If we're, so...
No, it won't be because that's not the, the original policy is not that, well, it will be actually, if that's the policy, because it's going to be a time that people who already served, like the two-years people, they might be eligible to be on, but one of the two only will be, will be...
Right, and it's unfair that, Myra, frankly, your district and my district, we're only two. These guys are three. We will have, our districts will have a disproportionate opportunity to serve, and that's not fair either. That's the problem with trying to...
It's never going to be perfect.
It's never going to be perfect.
But you know what?
And that's why I think we have to be willing to make decisions.
Right, but at the end of the day, like, if I'm, if I'm the one who's supposed to go, probably going to serve one time if I, if I will. So just be honest. I mean, this is what I don't understand. When you sit here, why don't you be honest and understand that other people, yeah, don't put in other people's shoes. I have no problem just making sure that everybody gets there.
If we had this discussion that night that we had a problem, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have this problem.
We wouldn't be having this discussion tonight.
The discussion should be done earlier because it looks like everyone, they knew what they were going to do that night. So anyhow, I don't want to go there because we're going to go back to things like that. So let's move forward and be kind to each other.
So anyway, just in my case, like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to just defer, and then I can only defer twice, right? And I might want to defer for Myra and defer for Greg, and I would, I would, right? So, and then I wouldn't be eligible again, and/or if I decline, I'm not, I wouldn't, I'm not eligible again for a few years. So it's, so maybe we do need to put it back in that once you've served, you have to take a gap. But, and then, and then there's, there's always an opportunity, like, the other thing that worries me about this strict language of, you know, if you say you're not going to do it, then you're banned for two years, and maybe it doesn't matter because we can always revisit with a four to five majority, but if something happens or people really don't want to serve, and then you kind of need that person to step up, right? That could also happen.
Yep, and this is, it makes me think of times when we've, even though, it's mostly about money and legal things to do with taxes where we have to have supermajority and, but if, if people are conflicted out, we have, we can still, it's, you know, you're supposed to not participate, but if there's too many people conflicted out and we don't have enough people to make the decision to have a quorum, we have to do it, right? And so it's that feeling to me as well, is we can't anticipate every nuance or possibility or, you know, mathematical calculation between the two years and the three years, and you've served before, but you haven't. And that's where I think the art, if you will, it's like we want to make it be a science, but then there's a bit of art, a bit of uncertainty, and that doesn't feel good. We want clarity and certainty, but you never know. The circumstances of a situation can be, we've got some, we're focusing a lot on housing, the person who, you know, is, there's three eligible people. One of them has a ton of experience with housing-related things. Not that the Mayor is the only person who does any decision-making, but they're the person who presides over the meeting, they're the person who works with the Vice Mayor, with the City Manager on this agenda setting. I mean, there's reasons why we may want a certain level of expertise and strict, not strict rotation, but eligibility of you've had a chance and you haven't had a chance doesn't really address those kinds of things. And those, because those are very subjective things that get factored into the decision. And I feel, I hear what you're saying, Greg. I feel like we want to get the subjectivity out and pretend like everybody's the same, and I don't think everybody is the same. I think we all bring different talents, expertise, backgrounds. Everyone has, should have the same opportunity.
Yes.
I think that's the case, but to say we're all the same, we all equally, you know, it can just be a straight rotation. I've served this position twice. I'm going to tell you right now, it's not just, you can just do it. You've got to work at it.
Well, let's take another example. Let's suppose that we're trying to build an offshore reef and we're having to negotiate with the feds, and let's suppose that there's only one council person that has a number of years of relationships with our congressperson.
I don't know. I mean, yes, we all have our own particular interests and capabilities and stuff, but...
But if we're locking it into a four-fifths majority, you're taking away an opportunity.
I don't know. I mean, we can all meet with those legislators and so forth too. I mean, I, I mean, yes, you're invited to a few extra meetings, right? When certain people come to town or whatever, you're leading meetings and...
No, I didn't mean that. I meant what you bring based on your expertise in your background or that you've developed on council. I didn't mean...
Specific.
From that point forward. I meant in terms of what adds to your eligibility. That's all.
So are we going to be...
And there may be a time when the council really wants that, we got to have that housing person, you know? If the focus is youth empowerment, I think there's one person on this dais right now that we would all say, hmm, youth empowerment, that's our key objective for this next year. I think I know who, sitting on this dais, has the most expertise there, right? There's something about building code and, and affordable housing development and development and building, hmm, there's a couple of people, just like we, I sat back when we were having that talk just now. I'm all, la-la-la-la, and waiting because I'm learning from you both, when you're going, yeah, but this, yeah, but that. And then it's helpful when the public is affirming or not. That is also a guide. So these are the things that, I'm just saying all this to say, there are these other nuanced parts that factor into these decisions that we cannot possibly write down on paper because they just are what they are.
And I do think we all have the same intent. We all want it to go well, to be best. We all want this kind of relationship with each other. We all want that. We don't want this to be a divisive thing. We don't want this to be a divisive thing for the future. We don't want this to be a divisive thing for our community. That's not what we want. I'm not sure that this is the way to do it.
So, in other words, what are you guys suggesting? Because, you know, let's...
But I do think, I mean, some of the problems that happened the last time are fixed here because anybody can put their name in and everybody has to be considered.
But are they?
And we all have to be able to have a discussion before a vote is taken.
That part I agree with.
So that is all super important, right?
I agree with you on those.
Are we going to be like, oh, yeah, you're not ready? Is that what we're going to do? You have to be ready.
I don't advise that.
No.
I'm just going to go on the record here and say my, my recommendation would be against doing that.
Okay, good.
And also, I feel like we're digging up some bones here that don't need to be dug up tonight.
Right, but what I'm saying is, like, are we going to select the way we have it here or are we going to take more time to work on it or make changes?
I'm not on that subcommittee. Let me tell you that.
Me neither.
I mean, I like, I think that some of the changes we made are really important and that they just spell things out. Yes, they add clarity.
Is that a motion?
Hold on. But what I heard from you was that you didn't like the supermajority required to deviate from the policy.
I, but I did like the fact that you were trying to make things more of a suggestion as opposed to a mandate.
What happened if we, the council who is, decided that the next person who's supposed to be a Vice Mayor, they decided not to follow the rules? And we don't have the supermajority. What is going to happen? So are we going to, we're going to follow then the rules? Is that right?
Right, so if, if a Vice Mayor wants to follow something different, then he could be called to order based on these council rules and protocols.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's not enforceable in terms of, like, we can't issue a citation or anything like that. It's just, it's that they couldn't do that because that conflicts with the council rules. It's just, it's that they couldn't do that because that conflicts with the council rules.
I'm ready to move forward with what's on this page tonight. I, it, to me feels like.
Wasn't there one?
We have one edit. To remove the 11 months in Section 9, subsection 2.
Because of the unintended interpretation, I mean, if you, if you did a strict interpretation.
Right.
And followed that to the letter, it would be a problem.
Right. And I also did take a stab at drafting some language that we discussed earlier. So if you want to hear it.
Yes, please.
Okay, so the council desires to encourage the rotation of mayor and vice mayor positions to create a diverse and inclusive process for all the elected officials who represent the whole city.
I like that. Love that.
And so that could just go right after section, the heading for Section 9, before number one.
That's lovely.
Just be a precursor.
Yeah.
I love that.
A preamble.
Thank you.
Yeah, make a motion.
So I will move with those amendments, the insertion of that statement at the beginning of Section 9, and the amendment to nine, the paragraph two under Section 9.
Yes.
I move approval.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
Good job.
We have a motion in a sec.
Just, just for the record, it's 10 minutes to 10.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
With the motion made as amended by Mayor Beckmeyer and seconded by Councilmember Beer, the vote passes four to one with Wright opposed.
Okay. There are two items.
I hold no hard feelings whatsoever.
There are two items left for us to do. What is council communications, the other staff communications?
I'm, I'm moving.
And we have 10 minutes.
10:15, okay.
And you're saying we, you think we can be done at 10:15?
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Do you think we can be done at 10:15? I do.
Okay, do it.
Do you?
Yeah.
Does everyone?
I just had a little.
Okay, let's shoot for that. All right. Who would like to speak, council communications? Anybody?
Yeah.
Go, please, go ahead.
I just want to make a, a statement. And I don't usually like write things down, but I, I felt like I needed to, so I'm actually going to read it. So I want to share an update and a message of reassurance regarding the recent concerns about immigration enforcement activities in the Bay Area and across California. I know many of our residents, particularly those in immigrant and mixed-status families, are feeling anxiety about reports of ICE presence in our region. As a council member, I want you to know that I stand firmly with our immigrant community and that local and statewide partners are working diligently to ensure safety and dignity and access to resources for all. Last night, I attended a statewide call hosted by California Working Families where I joined other local and regional leaders, including Myra and Christine were both there, in a conversation about how we can best respond to this movement. We heard powerful testimonies from elected officials in Portland and Chicago who have taken bold action to defend their communities and push back against fear-based tactics. Their examples remind us all that local leadership matters and that compassion, preparedness, and solidarity are stronger than intimidation. You know, there's a lot of resources out there. We have resources on Connect Pacifica. I think we should probably include some additional ones because we keep getting new ones. But I just feel like folks are afraid and where I work, a lot of families are very afraid. They're afraid to come out to get food. They're afraid to come into the Daily City Youth Health Center for services. And so I just felt the need to really just make a statement, so.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. That, and that was really an inspiring call last night. One of the speakers was David Chu, the city attorney for San Francisco. And they filed a number of lawsuits against Trump 1.0, and they're already up to more than that 11 in this version. And I'm proud that we, as a city, have joined in some of those too because the rules have changed now. You can't, you know, if, if your funding is being cut and you're not joining the lawsuit, then you're not eligible to get that. And so I'm really proud of us for standing up to our sanctuary city and laws and other funding for our infrastructure. At the same time, I went to the Housing Leadership Council Leadership Day. And I, obviously, there's a lot of things in the federal administration that are up in the air with the budget still not being finalized and, you know, proposed cuts to healthcare, food security, as we heard today. And also, I learned a lot about Section 8 funding. And we have a lot of vulnerable people in our community, seniors, you know, disabled families that really rely on that for, for their, because it pays a portion of their rent, right? So that they can, they can live here in town. The cuts to that funding also really impact the ability to build affordable housing because that's part of their financial stacks of having a certain number that are, units that are fully paid for partly because of the Section 8 funding. So my, my hope is that as things change, I know our city attorney's office is looking at those, the food and the housing are really things that could really impact our community. And I would hope that we continue looking for ways if we need to participate in that to protect our community. Sorry?
It's 9:57, so I just wanted to.
Oh, I thought we were going to 10:15.
Oh, we need to make a motion.
Well, I said I thought we would be finished by 10:15. Do we need to have a motion on that?
Okay, no.
I think the rule says we have to say.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
How much time we think we need to finish.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Just one other thing, Peninsula Clean Energy is, we're, we're at the point where, like, next year is the 10-year anniversary. And so.
Unbelievable.
A whole new strategic plan. I mean, all the money that they've invested in our community and our, in our government buildings and so forth to help us save money and, you know, reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. There are also, I just joined the programs committee, which lets me in a little early on, you know, different things, you know, possibilities for the community. And that we're applying for a $40 million grant from the state to do more deep retrofits to buildings, commercial, residential, and affordable housing too. So that's super exciting. One of the, one of the difficult conversations in the midst of this 10 years that the name Peninsula Clean Energy isn't really serving us anymore because they've expanded to Los Banos as part of it. But also, like, the acronym PCE sounds too much like PG&E. And so people are very confused on their bills and stuff. So they did this whole marketing search with this famous firm and, drumroll. The new name is going to be Westlight Power. And I wasn't blown away. But what I really love is the tagline, which is the power of we. The first two, the first two letters of West. So, anyway.
That's cute. New names are hard. Yeah, we have a new, we're going to have a new. We're going to have a new name at the Daily City Youth Health Center coming out soon, so. Same kind of gig.
Okay. Anyone else?
I guess we're running out of time, so.
No, no. If you have anything to contribute or you want to let us know about a meeting or anything like that, please, by all means.
Well, I was at the meeting too, and I seen other people, what there, some people are doing is patrolling, kind of patrolling the school when people comes and drop off their kids. There's some people patrolling and letting other people know that the, the ICE is around just to make sure that they can peacefully go and drop off their kids instead of being worried about. I seen on TV that people trying to drop off their kids, they got arrested by ICE. So I think the community is, I don't want to be on anybody's shoes, but I think this is a very, a lot of people are suffering right now with this situation. And they don't know, they cannot go to work, they cannot do much right now.
Healthcare, too.
It's very difficult. And I, I don't know if this is going to continue. And what can we do to protect our community together? So we had to probably figure it out, what can we do? Because I don't think we have any plans right now.
Well, one thing I can offer that was stated at a couple of meetings I've been at and has been circulated in the school district is for families to make sure that their emergency card is updated with the people that can pick up and drop off your child. So that, should there be a need for someone else to bring the child or someone to retrieve the child, the, the documents are there and in place because the, the school district is very careful about that. So that was, I mean, it's a small thing. The other thing I was thinking about, but I, I didn't write it down, maybe you did, Christine. When Noelia Supervisor Corzo was speaking Friday night at our Council of Cities Dinner, there were, there were resources that she referenced on the county website, and I didn't write down.
I didn't write them down either.
So if we, we'll look around and find that, we can send it to the city clerk for, and to get it into Connect with Pacifica. Because I know, oh, you have it? Ah, Mary! Yeah, okay, that would be great. Because we did post something last week, and I think it just will probably be a routine thing that we'll keep doing that.
And I just wanted to add, I know some of the communities who spoke last night were also, like, raising money because, you know, for some of these people that are afraid to go to work or afraid to go to the grocery store. And just hearing from the PRC and, you know, other funding cuts, like, give money to the PRC.
Yeah.
That's really the best source.
Gift cards, gift cards.
Money.
You know, they might need help paying their rent. Drop off turkeys, money, yes. Yes. Go ahead, I have one.
Since I have no minutes, I will say the only.
There's 10 minutes left. I only need one.
Okay, I only need one too. I went last week, I was at the Cal-Lafco Conference down in San Diego.
Yes.
How was it?
It was a lot of fun. I got the opportunity to ask a lot of questions of a lot of people going through things that I anticipate we may go through. I learned a ton, and I look forward to going again next year.
Awesome. Thank you for serving, Greg. That's really important. It's been important for Pacifica to be involved in Lafco for quite a long time now. And I appreciate you putting yourself out there for that. Okay, I want to talk about this weekend because there are many overlapping things happening at the same time on Saturday morning. I want to figure out, because we're all here in a public meeting, who's going to what? And I'm definitely going to Arbor Day, as you heard. Simultaneously is our Aloney Portola Celebration and Hike. That is going on starting at 9 o'clock in the morning at the Reese, at the Community Center with tabling and information. And then 10:30 to 12:30 is the hike part. And overlapping that is Congress, as of yesterday, it might be getting changed, but last I heard Congressman Licardo is having a meeting, I believe, at the Public Library, at Sharp Park Library.
At 10.
At 10 o'clock. And the purpose of that meeting is coastal issues crisp, which is the coastal resilience, da-da-da, infrastructure structure, blah, plan, which we figure into. So it's kind of like hurting my heart to not go on the hike. But I think my plan is to go to Arbor Day and then to the library. That is my intention. And I wanted to see if there, anyone else has plans or can cover or where we are.
Well, Arbor Day starts at 10 as well, right?
Yeah, I know. So basically not going to stay and plant a tree is kind of what, where it's at for me.
I think I was going to go to the Licardo event just because that's, it's not necessarily what I wanted to do because I'd much rather plant a tree, but I feel like it's good for us to talk about this. So let's decide who's going where.
Well, I'm definitely going to Arbor Day because I'm speaking and I'm giving out awards.
I know that Myra is going to Arbor Day.
Oh, because it's in her district.
Yes, yes.
I unfortunately will be in Boston.
You're going to Boston, that wasn't on the list.
Lobster.
That's not choice.
She'll be having lobster.
Um, I think in terms of how I would prioritize things, I think going to the library is high on my priority list.
Good, thank you. And someone should be there from the get and, or more, or several someones. It's very important for us to show up, and it's important for us to support our congressman in his endeavors to bring dollars, big dollars, 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 dollars to our county, to his jurisdiction, and especially to the city.
And I have that time, I have from 10 to 12.
Perfect.
So.
Thank you. Well, hopefully I will see you there, and I did give staff, his staff, and, you know, I explained to them why.
Hopefully other people in the community go on the hike.
And it usually is well-attended, so I, I'm sorry that I can't be there. That was my main thing. Anything else? I just had one last, last thing. No? Okay. I did want to, Sarah Coffey, our city clerk, was kind enough to share with me some sad news, which is that our former city clerk Florence Flo Derby passed away recently. And she served the city from June of 2006 to May of 2010. And I wanted to acknowledge her passing and to thank her family because I watch what happens with Sarah and with Emily, and thank her family for the support that she undoubtedly gave prior to our time on this council. But this is, you know, we are a long, multi, multi-generational, multi, multi-phase family. And so someone in the family of the city of Pacifica passed away, and I wanted to acknowledge that and to adjourn the meeting in her memory.
Do we have staff communication?
I know.
Oh, sorry. And then we'll, we'll have staff communications and then we'll adjourn the meeting in Flo Derby's memory.
Good evening. I have no items for staff communications.
Well, we would really like to thank you for stepping in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, everyone. And with that, our meeting is adjourned at 10:07. Flo.